I hope it's not a tax. It's a pet too. I know, but yes, you know. And the woman that's. If you heard about that. That's got that. No one's following us down.
All right, we're going to call this meeting to order. Will Clark J. Riesman, please take the role for us.
Uh, yes, Treasurer Delaney.
Present.
Trustee Vance.
Here.
Trustee Pearson.
Present.
Supervisor Kramer.
Here.
With Riesman here, all present, forum present.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the last minutes?
I'll make that motion. Support.
So Jan makes the motion and Jan supports. Any discussion? All in favor?
I don't know.
Uh, motion passes. Um, we're going to start on the township, uh, transition report. What we're going to do here is we're going to talk about what we've been working on for the last twenty-four months. Um, this is not a training session, nor is it a workshop. Um, but we're going to talk about what we did over the last twenty-three months. So you have a frame of reference on this rather huge list. Sue made it, but she was. So we'll go over this list. And, uh, there'll be some more. We'll have a final list when we're done because I think you added some things. And we'll make sure that the new board members get that by tomorrow, either by email or uh, some other means. So I want to turn it over now to, uh, Jan, who's going to give us, uh, something we can reference.
Okay, I'm going to start with, um, the list that we have done. Much of this has already been told during the annual meeting, but we're going to go over it again. This fiscal year marks our second consecutive balanced budget achieved through zero-based budgeting. Under this policy, departments receive the necessary operational funding while one-time high-cost expenditures are categorized as capital improvement projects or CIPs and are financed separately from their operational budgets. We generated three hundred thousand dollars approximately in extra revenue through land and cemetery plot sales, which funded vital community improvements and CIPs. This success is attributed to rigorous accountability, zero-based budgeting, and efficient financial management. By prioritizing capital improvements, aggressively pursuing grants, practicing prudent fiscal planning, each department maximized resources to achieve more with less. Importantly, all these achievements are made without increasing taxes, ensuring fiscal responsibility and community benefit. We have identified a number of township account balances that are inaccurate and have been for several years. We worked to correct them, establish checklists, and month-end closing processes to reduce the risk of this happening in the future. We have amended prior years inaccurately filed payroll tax returns and corrected tax payments and answered correspondence from the IRS in the state of Michigan, reducing these events to zero. Additionally, ongoing problems solved, our workman comp audit, which in two thousand twenty-three, we had three of them versus a typical one per year. And we've had one successful one in two thousand twenty-four. Tax returns that were refiled to avoid IRS payments, tax incremental financial reports, three in two thousand twenty-three versus a typical one per year for the DVA. Trailer parks' tax payments were reinstated in two thousand twenty-three and recovered for the last five years of non-payment. Office personnel, our office staff and elected officials have exceeded their statutory duties to ensure effective operations. We hired our current administrative assistant with professional experience in office and elections assistance, crucial for managing four year, four elections this, this year. Through cross-training, these professionals now work year-round, supported by volunteers on special projects. Cemetery improvements. Oak Hill and Ohioville cemeteries have significant enhancements, including improved grounds and renovated buildings at Oak Hill. We updated content cemetery software to service our master database with backup master cars, increased and published fees, um, covering operational costs and allowing us to effectively validate remaining burial locations. This year, we managed four elections, as I previously said. Prioritizing the neglected qualified voter file was crucial. Over two hundred voters replaced on residency verification, twenty-two deceased voters were removed, and twenty voters were disqualified due to residency changes. These steps significantly, um, bolstered election integrity. Park and meeting room reservations developed and website status and notification process to provide more transparency and access them, uh, better than wall calendars. Pension police, a police pension fund. Two years ago, the pension, uh, fund for the police department had a liability of almost one million dollars. This year, we were able to make an additional three hundred thousand dollar voluntary contribution to vent, to benefit that and the police and the township government and the taxpayer. It should bring our underfunded liability down to approximately the five hundred fifty thousand dollar range, but that varies depending on inflation and different things like that. So we'll see how it pans out later, but at least we made a significant improvement there. Township record storage. The township records room has been completely redone and organized, and appropriate records destroyed according to the Record Retention Act requirements. Overall, this has truly been a remarkable year for the people of Tuscora Township. This board heard your concerns about the decaying and neglected infrastructure throughout the community loud and clear. We made it the highest priority. With the help of many volunteers and a dedicated board of trustees, this community has achieved significant milestones in improving roads, bridges, parks, road ends, cemeteries, township buildings, airport, light, and sewers, and I'll discuss that in more detail in just a minute. Let's discuss the roads. Club Road, long plagued by serious decay for decades, faced the project, uh, prospect of being downgraded to gravel. This would not only hamper traffic to the boat launch and Marina Park, but also pose the safety concerns. We utilized federal COVID funds to complete this essential paving project. Nabinai Road has recently been paved, benefiting users of the boat launch and enhancing the quality of life for residents by eliminating dust and potholes. Gravel and brining have been applied to the unimproved roads townshipwide, addressing washouts, potholes, and unsafe conditions. The township has provided the road commission with much-needed funds for gravel and repairs. Brining these roads helps control the dust, a significant issue for residents who happen to live on these roads. Bridges, the bridge on State Straits Highway has some minor issues underneath, including peeling concrete wall paint that not only looks unsightly, but exposes the structure to salt and road debris. The county road commission has generously provided the necessary paint, and Supervisor Kramer and his grandson Blake have already started scraping, but painting will need to be done at a later date. River Steps, completion of the steps from River Street to Indian River is a significant achievement, while initial cost estimates were far off. Ensuring safe access was paramount, given the dangers posed by the deteriorating previous steps. The new steps are safe and ADA compliant until the washout happened, and I'll talk about that in a few minutes. Parks, Cooperation Park has many improvements thanks to a county grant. Volunteers and employees have been hard at work renovating the concession stand, bathrooms, and bleachers. Gravel been laid on the driveways with more planned. The township acquisition of a new dump-style truck promises long-term utility for our employees. Marina Park has had extensive gravel placement to reinforce parking areas, enhancing usability during wet weather, and improving overall parking conditions. Last fall, a dedicated group of citizens came together to beautify the township hall. River Steps, Marina Park, Boat Dock, and Boat Launch areas evident this spring with the blooming daffodils in two of Tuscora Township. Over two thousand daffodils were planted last year with, uh, many more planned for this year as well. Highway Park, gravel was added to correct the mud and washout issues on the driveway, and a park side grill has been installed, making the park more accessible and enhancing its usability and atmosphere. Vivo Beach Park, the wall between the beach and the grassy area has been extended, coupled with the ongoing exceptional, um, maintenance efforts by the park's employees and commission, ensures the park remains pristine. Efforts are underway to secure a DNR grant for the new restrooms, crucial when the sewer system is finished. Road Ends, access to our waterways via road ends is crucial for our citizens to enjoy the lakes, rivers, and streams. Over the years, many road ends have been abolished, and others have become overgrown and neglected, making public asks, access nearly impossible. These road ends, as their name suggests, mark the termination points of roads, and they belong to the public, not adjacent property owners. While they are publicly owned and maintained by the county, maintenance has not been a priority for the road commission, but thanks to many voices throughout the township, we have collaborated with the road commission to prioritize the maintenance improvement of these road ends. With the dedicated support of volunteers and the county road commission, we have identified several neglected road ends for restoration, making them accessible and usable, once again, for the entire community. The effort underscores our commitment to enhancing public access to natural water resources and ensuring these valuable assets are enjoyed by all. Cemeteries, significant progress has been made at Oak Hill Cemetery with completed refurbishment of the building and foundation fortification funded by a bike grant. Tree trimming has enhanced the aesthetics with diseased or problematic trees removed. While Ohioville Cemetery requires some more minor attention, overall cemetery conditions have vastly improved thanks to the diligent efforts of our maintenance group. Township Buildings and Properties, a two hundred thousand dollar grant facilitated much-needed repairs to the township building and property. Foundation repairs are underway on the south side with collaboration from the library, police department, and township supervisors to secure the necessary grant funding. The board successfully sold property in Comanche Park, which has, had been on the market for many years, along with the township-owned properties that were not in use. The revenue generated from these sales have been instrumental in funding infrastructure and CIP projects, like I said before. Housing and Economic Development, the shortage of middle-income housing is a significant challenge in our community, affecting professionals like teachers, nurses, and small business owners who struggle to find suitable housing options. This issue often forced families to relocate, disrupting community stability and cohesion. To address this pressing need, a developer has purchased land in Comanche Park with plans to construct housing specifically tailored to middle-income professionals. This initiative aims to retain local talent, foster community growth, and provide housing solutions that align with the needs of our residents. Furthermore, Tuscora Township established a municipal parking lot in a strategic location along the trail and Martha Street North. This area is conveniently situated near the downtown shopping district, being an ideal location for a public parking facility. Preliminary engineering plans have already been developed, and enhancing parking infrastructure not only supports local businesses by improving accessibility, but also enhances the overhaul, convenience for residents and visitors alike, especially the small businesses in the downtown area. These initiatives highlight our commitment to tackling critical housing shortages and enhancing infrastructure within Tuscora Township. By addressing these challenges, we aim to create a sustainable and vibrant community that meets the needs of current and future residents for years to come. So let's talk about the airport. Volunteer hangar owners have been instrumental in maintaining and improving airport facilities, often donating equipment and labor. We hired a company to do the crack sealing and some of the airport volunteers, excuse me, and a lot, and with Supervisor Kramer, rolled up their sleeves and got the line painting done, ensuring compliance with MDOT aeronautics standards and securing funds for future airport improvements from timber sales.
Just a second.
Yes.
It was all Mark, Markowitz. Raise your hand. Airport.
Mark's the man. He really is. Thank you, DNR Airport. Light enforcement continues to target trash and unregistered vehicles and overgrown properties like those on Parky and King Roads. Removal of two mobile homes on Front Neck has mitigated light issues at no cost to taxpayers. Community dump day initiated last year due to public demand and has returned this August, this last August, offering free disposal services to residents. Broadband expansion efforts, supported by various community entities and the Tuscora Township Board, are, are underway across Tuscarora County, including underserved areas in Tuscora Township. The new VA clinic is operational, benefiting many local veterans and the broader community. Additionally, Penn Gary's Party Store has made significant contributions to our local economy and the community vibrancy, and their new building looks wonderful. Big B Coffee is finally operational. A new laundry facility is underway, which is much, a much-needed service for our community. The township board meetings are now being broadcast live on YouTube for increased transparency and community engagement. For more information, please visit our website. Downtown Commercial Rehab District, efforts are underway to establish this district, which we actually have already, is from river to river, and is essential for securing MEBC grants and loans to support local small businesses and improvements. These initiatives demonstrate our commitment to enhancing our downtown area without increasing taxes. If, okay, and so, we, anyway, moving on. We are in the process of fulfilling the most important citizen-driven project in the history of Tuscora Township. Years ago, during the first sewer project in the commercial district, a board member at that time said she would never do another sewer project ever. Well, we're not doing one, we're not doing two, we're not doing three, we're actually doing four sewer projects, including Phase One, Phase Two, Phase Three, and the Eagle-funded plant upgrade. This project is estimated to be approximately between fifteen and sixteen million dollar investment, and would not be possible without the numerous funding sources we were able to obtain. Fireworks, July fourth is the community parade, and because of that, um, we also had our fireworks on Friday, July fifth. It was the most spectacular show we have ever had, thanks to many, many, many community donations. And this is an important event, not only for our community, but for our country, as it is the event that brings everyone together for one purpose, to be thankful for our country and to honor those who have preserved our freedoms. Okay, so those are basically the accomplishments. Does anybody on the board have any more they'd like to throw in there?
I think we need to mention the policy book.
Oh, yes.
Because, um, if you go back in the old minutes book downstairs, there was reference where the board tried to establish one in nineteen ninety-five. And we needed that policy book desperately because of all the new requirements since the last sewer project from EPA, USDA. And now, Ron, correct me if I'm wrong, but do you have to follow certain requirements even for this two hundred thousand.
Right.
Grant, and without that chapter four, which is the most important chapter in the book, in my opinion. What you think about that, but, uh, uh, that was one thing. Roads. For the first time in, I think they told me two or three decades, uh, we've provided enough money for the road commission to repair, uh, every single gravel road in the township. Everyone. Now, didn't, are they up to standard? No. Did we put gravel on every single road? Uh, no, but they patched, they filled the potholes, they created it. Every single road, uh, that's gravel has gotten attention. And, um, uh, we just don't want that to, you know, hopefully that'll continue because some of the things that I've seen out on, uh, McMichael and King, where there is no road, it's nothing but sand, it's all washed out. So, um, it's these little things, um, and the residents out on the west side, they, they, they really, um, appreciate that. But the other thing is, we convinced the owner across the street to tear down the bar.
Oh, yeah.
At the lumberyard.
Yeah, the lumberyard.
Uh, and, and, uh, the last thing is, what I really like, is you can go on the website and you get a full picture of what's going on. Every month, we post everything. You can see all the warts, you can see all the mistakes. And, uh, despite all the upheaval, I think it's been worth it because this is the way, in my opinion, government needs to act. I don't know, I can't, I'm sure there's other things, but.
I could add a couple.
Yes, please.
Okay, so, um, as of today.
Turn it on.
It was. Is that better? The, the DDA has a complete trial balance. Uh, the auditors will not be creating a financial statement for the DDA anymore. It's all there. It took, uh, several days, but it's done now. The UIA audit, that is a comprehensive audit where the, um, an agent from unemployment is directed by the IRS to go through all of the employee-related and subcontractor-related transactions to make sure people are being classified correctly. There was a very, very, very minor adjustment to include, um, police department uniforms as part of reportable wages for UIA. That does not result in a change in taxes, but it does, uh, result in some changes to payroll codes and future reporting, particularly in the first quarter of two thousand twenty-five. We extended hours in the office. Uh, I remember distinctly several people complaining during the last major election about the office closing at two o'clock and not being open on Friday. That, that does not exist anymore, and, uh, I, I enjoy the later hours, and I have enjoyed talking to people, um, beyond those hours in evenings and on Saturdays. Miscellaneous billing module was added. In the past, uh, we frequently created, uh, invoices that didn't exist in the accounting system, particularly for people who were renting the hangers, um, but renting the land for the hangers, those airport leases, and a number of other miscellaneous things that come up. They now exist in the system where we can follow up and collect on those. Uh, I am sure that particularly with the trailer park, without that module, those things would get missed. There was one more thing that I can't, um, and I think we, we've gotten a good start on going through the utility billing accounts and trying to develop, to develop a, uh, process to make sure that, um, as the assessor works and changes, uh, parcels, whether they get split or combined or dropped off the rolls, that we, um, note that and have a record of why that happened and, uh, when we expected to go back online, for example.
Jay.
I can't think of anything right now.
Other than getting through four elections.
I'm just trying to get through the last election. We're almost there.
Yeah.
I'll talk about it on the board.
Yeah. He's too bashful.
I think he's brain dead from Tuesday. I just wanted to bring up all the flowers.
Jay's greatest strength is the processes, especially for payment of bills. It's, it's, I mean, I hope the auditor recognizes your efforts and Jan's efforts.
And Chris's efforts.
Chris's efforts on the, on the flow.
But, but since you asked, I'm, I'll use this opportunity just to mention, this, uh, fourth election, uh, while we're still trying to wrestle through some, uh, adjustments to the numbers, and we'll get there, it's not, um, it's just extra work. We had a great, I think, election, and I'll commend all the people that were volunteering for the election, the election inspectors. I'm going to go through their names, Amy Grandy, who was our chair, Penny Paznoff, who was my deputy footer, Jim and Vicky Bowers, Darrell Jimmy Davis, Molly Cooley, Carolyn Don Westerhoff, Rebecca Bell, Vicki Forster, Ron Oldenbaum, all played key roles, played key roles in making sure we could, uh, get things developed properly. We had twenty-two hundred and fifty voters for this past election. Eight hundred and eighty at the poll, and that's plus or minus one, I'm not, I forget the actual number, but it was like eight seventy-nine. One thousand and one absentee ballots, three hundred and seventy-nine people. Took advantage of going to the early voting in Tuscarora, which was pretty much a godsend for those that did come to the polls. We had, uh, so that, that adds up to about twenty-two hundred and fifty, um, voters. We did have, uh, some changes in how we operated, trying to streamline things, make sure the people that were, uh, taking the person's application, giving them the ballot, and getting them, you know, set up with tables. Uh, we put, removed the greeter out to the vestibule. And we, uh, we put a bunch of applications out there so people could get started on that. We tried to answer any questions they might have. We tried to alert them to the different things on the ballot, such as vote, you want to vote both sides of the ballot. And we'd isolate special issues, people that needed registered for answer. For instance, they didn't have to come through the line and disrupt things here, we simply took them into my office. And then we put chairs out there as well, which I believe were welcoming to a number of people that did wait. And we did have, um, it was totally unusual. The last election, I remember in twenty, I would imagine twenty-two was simpler, twenty was similar. I remember twenty-two, they were lined up to, uh, the Klatchkis. This time, we had people lined up in the morning at seven o'clock up to the parking lot. And we were able to get them in the building out of the rain, and then, uh, obviously move forward from there. I think we ended up having two hundred people in the first, uh, hour and a half to two hours. That's, that was the read which we were getting people through there. So all in all, even despite the minutia that we're still working on, uh, was a successful election, so. That's all I'm going to say there.
Hey, uh, Chief, you have anything? You, you've made some improvements. Bought some stuff and some cars. Could you just?
So we just.
Tell us what you've done.
Yeah, we recently, uh, got a brand-new patrol car and still waiting for it to get out, but it didn't get back to me. The guy's had it for four months. I called him yesterday and asked him if I had to report it stolen or not, but. We also purchased a new command trailer, which is awesome inside. If you get a chance, I'll be at the office, I'll give you a quick tour. It's not completely altered yet, but we're getting there. And probably the most important thing is I did, uh, add one extra opposite to my staff. So hopefully I won't have to work the road as much anymore and, uh, would be more available.
Which you should not be.
Do the administrative stuff and actually be in the office.
Could, could you talk about, you know, I thought at first on a command trailer, I mean, what is this? You know, the first division or something? But you explained to me why that's important. Could you explain to the board why it's important?
So a lot of times in the, especially in climate weather, uh, we'll have get dispatched to a scene where we're going to be there. For instance, last winter was a fatal fire. We were on the scene for probably about twenty-eight hours. Twenty-eight hours standing out in that wind in the cold in February was ridiculous. At about hour fourteen, the Michigan State Police actually brought a command trailer for us to use.
But the fire department, the firemen used it too, correct?
So, yes, so anytime we have a massive fire too, it's got heat air conditioning, um, there's going to be a big cooler in there for water. It'll have, uh, eight hundred meter radio for communication.
First aid.
Yeah, first aid kits, all that stuff. So anytime we have a major fire too, we'll actually haul that out and set it up for the fire department to use so they can get out of the elements in the winter time, get in the trailer, warm up, be able to take their heavy equipment off, and, uh, kind of relax a little bit and actually some back in those fingers, so.
I just wanted to thank you, and I'm sure I speak for the rest of the board on your excellent financial management skills. Paying down that debt was, you know, we just asked you to do it and you made it happen. I don't know how you made it happen.
We're, we're getting there.
But I'm, I'm very impressed. I didn't think it would go down this, this fast, especially that, during that time when we had a negative stock market and stuff. That's all to you.
Let's hope it turns around.
Yeah.
Today was a good day.
Today was a great day.
And yesterday.
Ron, do you have anything? You've made a lot of improvements.
I can, I can give you a, a really brief synopsis on the building grant, uh, and where we are. So, uh, two hundred thousand dollars, uh, grant with a seventeen thousand five hundred dollar expectation of contribution from the township that can be in-kind labor. We have already completed a number, and some of this is repetitive.
We have already completed a number, and some of this is repetitive, I apologize, I'll be brief. Some of this is already completed. So gutters already completed. Basement waterproofing already completed, just waiting for the electrical to be installed. The people are here giving us bids, we had two people here today. Parking lot lighting already completed. Engineering study for the basement already completed. Cameras already completed, with the exception of one minor change order. It's already in the works and the check's already in process. What am I forgetting, or?
Phone system.
Phone system was not part of the grant, but that was, you know, we did upgrade that by necessity when, you know, in, in summer of twenty-three, that was done. Because the existing system was end of life. You couldn't have maintained it even if you wanted to. So we did see a savings because we got rid of the forty-dollar per month per line charge from Spectrum. Went to avoid system that runs through the internet connection, so we are saving money on that. Much more advanced system. What else?
The server.
Yes, our, again, forced change. The server would have been, we could have scratched it till twenty-twenty-six from a software standpoint. Had a hardware crash a couple of months ago, was forced to replace the server, was using a borrowed server from our IT provider. The borrowed server crashed once, had to be replaced. So we have a brand-new state-of-the-art server. The cost for both the hardware and the switchover was about three grand less than what we were originally told. That money was able to be put into the building grant. It is here on site. Transition is not completely done, with about seventy-five percent done. The old server is running virtually on the new server, and there's some BSNA stuff that's still to be done, but.
Fire suppression, HX.
Fire alarm system. Bidding process is done, contract is awarded. I just sent an email today, hey, when does the work start?
Can you talk about this place being a fire trap?
Yeah. So again, no fire alarms in the building. They're on the plans, they're not here, much like the elevator, on the plans, not here. I, I have no idea what went on in ninety-three, ninety-four. There's no one to ask. Everybody involved in those projects is deceased, so.
Fire suppression.
Bit out a full fire system. Now suppression, I'm a little uncomfortable with. It's more of fire monitoring, fire alarm. It was complicated because this is a complex building. There's three distinct agencies here. There are different classes of buildings. So for instance, this room, because of the occupancy, is considered a Class A room. The rest of the building downstairs, our offices, considered Class B. The requirements are different. The more population, the more rated the people can be in the area, the more stringent that becomes. Bottom line, we rated the whole building as Class A. So the price of the fire alarm went up dramatically, almost doubled actually. Plus you gotta add in prevailing wage with that, so the Davis Bacon Act that the feds require and the state also requires that the contractors pay prevailing wage. So end of the day, twenty-nine-thousand-dollar fire alarm is gonna end up costing us about forty-seven-thousand dollars. That is lights and sirens in every room. It's ADA compliant, so the, the deaf have strobe lights for the alarms, and that is Class A in, in every room in the building. So that installation starts, I would say, within two weeks.
And paid for by the grant.
And paid for by the grant.
Chris and Dan, I know you've made a lot of improvements. Can you just give us the highlights of the evidence?
Well, we, we had to work with the auditors and actually get the bookwork that's never been here. They've been keeping their own set of books here because, there, because apparently we weren't able to do it here. Dan uploaded part of it today. Dan, I know, is still working on one of them. That's one of the bigger problems, why you didn't have books here. I don't know why your auditing firm was keeping them. I don't know. But that's one of the big things we've gone into.
And Dan, I know you gave us a big report the last time, but could you just give us the highlights on everything you've corrected? Or just general highlights?
Well, basically, give a lot of credit to Chris. I was here at board to assist her. In the domain, our objective was to get a baseline where we can rely on the books for a start. And so we're almost there. And it's, Chris and our treasurer there, they worked very hard to get the books in order and, and not just in order, but to have support. In other words, you got numbers on a piece of paper, but at least there's something supporting it now. You can at least take a look at it and see what makes up that information. And like Chris said, why the auditors were keeping their own set of books, we don't know, but that is now in here. So we got one set of books, not two. And, and so it's in a good shape going forward.
Go ahead.
I overlooked one person. I don't have any of this written down, I was just trying to go back to my memory here, but save the best for last. Katie Shepherd was also an inspector. She's, I believe, eighteen years old, maybe nineteen now, but homeschooled, outstanding musician. And, you know, obviously the youngest election inspector we had working with us. And she just did an outstanding job of quick learning and introducing the whole election process to somebody less than age, so. I'll leave it at that, but she did a great job. So that, that runs out of all the people that we had working.
Okay, so if, if there's nothing further.
Kim, wait a minute, Kim, do you have anything?
I was just gonna mention about the flowers, the many volunteers that got together and planted on the bulbs in the community and cleaned up the, the road ends. Yeah, the road ends are mentioned, but, you know, I'm very, it's parks, in the parks, they put in other, kind of places in the community where you drive by, they can see the flowers, so they'll be, they're bulbs, so they'll come up every year.
In the past two years, we planted thirty-five-hundred bulbs. Doug really went to town. And planted a thousand, at least, recently.
Just this year.
Just this year. So now we're gonna go to the to-do list.
Yep.
What I'd like to do here, board members and our support staff over here and deputy supervisor, we're gonna go down this list, but you can pop up. Anything that you think is relevant as we go down this list.
Yeah, if we miss something.
Because I would assume that the new board members are gonna wanna take notes and then ask questions later of the staff and the board, not at this meeting, but at another time. So let's start with the cemetery. Who wants to lead that off?
I'll take it off. Okay, just to let everybody know. Township government, any government, but I'm specifically talking about township government, it's like laundry. It's never done. You get done with one load, you got three more sitting there waiting. You get done with one day, then tomorrow starts again. So that's how business is around here. It's like every day you come in, you do what you can do, and then you prioritize for the next day, and then three more things pop up that you didn't even know that was there. Right, Chris? That's how it goes. So it's like laundry. Think of, think of this as our laundry list of to-do. Some of this has, we're working on, some of it we're trying to get to, and others is in the future, but will be in the near future. The new board will have to prioritize these however they see fit. And, and, but what we wanna make sure is the community and the new board elect will be able to have this. And so they, they will know what's coming at them, that you don't just mysteriously, like, they didn't tell me, why didn't they tell me? Well, we're gonna tell you. We're gonna tell the whole community at the same time, so everybody knows. So buckle up, it's gonna be a long list. It always is. The to-do list is always longer than the done list, so. So we're gonna start with cemeteries. Ohioville needs all-new gravel down the middle of the road. Ohioville also needs tree trimming and cutting of dead trees. Oak Hill needs more tree removal and trimming in the older section. Eve tross are needed on the Oak Hill building, more road. Move road around the mausoleum where it's not running over vacant grave sites. The fence and the rocks need to be moved as well. Finish the updating cemetery cars with the pontum records. Update available list with a forty-year rule. And cemetery has broken lot markers that may to be replaced. Is there anything else on the cemetery that we can add?
We did, we did spend five-thousand dollars repairing that fence. I would suggest you all keep an eye on that. We did not replace anything. We had it straightened up from the beginning to the end. I think they did a great job.
A lot of that is from, like, when the road commissioner are plowing the roads and stuff like that, they don't see it all, and it gets, the, the snow gets pushed into it, and get, they get moved around a little bit, so.
Yeah, so that's gonna need continuous attention.
Is the valve course replaced, fence?
The wooden fence?
Yeah.
I don't think so. I didn't see that that needed to be repaired.
It ain't. It was, well, it, they have been repaired.
Okay.
I haven't, I haven't been there in several months.
Okay.
All right, so we'll move on to sewers and water. The operations contract with Meaton Hunt. We have two contracts that we approved last December or January. One was just to run the plant. And the second contract was new. We have to pay them to interface with our engineer on the new project. Those two contracts tend, I believe, at the end of the year, and they need to be rebid out in December. The Commerce Park Water Supply Contract needs to be bid. Did you wanna speak about that, Ron?
I, I'll interject a little personal belief here. My personal belief, not speaking for the board, is that we need a water ordinance as well as a sewer ordinance. Or you modify the sewer ordinance to include water. It's perfectly legal and compliant with only one user, but I would feel much better with an ordinance. There's nothing, and ultimately, you know, the health department has the, holds, holds the, the key to that. And if they're happy, then everybody else should be happy. But I, I really think that that needs to be defined. And the sewer ordinance probably needs some updating as well. In terms of, in terms of the REU assignment in the building.
Yeah. You know, when people complain about REUs and you charge them too much, we charge them not enough. We have a criteria sheet. The new board's welcome to change it any way they want. Commerce Park needs to have all the water and sewer lines marked. So you go out there right now and this, you can't even call Ms. Dig because there's no contract with them for Commerce Park. And with all the activity out there, with all these sold lots, the contract with Ms. Dig needs to be amended. The other issue is the one-million-dollar congressional earmark. I spoke with NEMCOG and EPA today. They're coming down the home stretch. I was hoping to get that done this week, but, you know, we wanna make it absolutely correct. So it's gonna be a little while longer, but I'm, I'm positive it'll be successful. And this is, again, this is really, really important. We, we need that one million dollars not only to expand the plant to help to be ready for Phase Three, but we need to get additional contingency funding. Because right now, the township has put in well over two-hundred-thousand, I believe.
Did or take that?
That we are having to provide for contingency. So if we get that million dollars, that two-hundred-thousand can be taken and given back to the township where, where it belongs. And you, you can see on the form here about, you know, re-adding storage and chemicals at the plant because we had to cut it down. We wanna bring it back up to standard. So, and the storage of those chemicals is so important, so we need the building to go back to the original design. Additionally, there should be money left over even after that for Phase Three engineering, which is more difficult than Dean River Bridge. And you all can pop in here if I miss something. I think you already mentioned that we need design processes for collection and handling of past due sewer bills.
I would consider that done. That's been documented. There was a process here when I got here. It was the documentation that was missing.
Okay, good. Address REM, REU and O and M issues for recently vacated lots and determine refunds if any, and issue refunds applied for and approved by the board. We have approved some, or one, I believe. Not two. But we haven't refunded them yet, and we may not get to it. I wonder, before we leave office, EGLE sewer grant is a hundred percent reimbursable. You can find all those documents on the shared drive. Also with the bathrooms for Devoe Beach, we should have a decision from the DNR on the grant we applied for. We should have that in December, a decision. Yes or no? If not, I found another grant that can work. Don't know if you had time to do it or not. But there's a Michigan Department of Agriculture Rule Development Grant up to a hundred-thousand dollars. So if those bathrooms cost us a hundred-and-thirty or a hundred-and-forty thousand, we could get a hundred-thousand dollars out of that grant. It's the same grant program that paid for the botox. Oh, okay, here's one. Oh, I just wanna make it clear. This list is not telling anybody what to do. This is just telling you where we are, where we were headed. What you do is, when you take office, is your business.
Right.
We, we, we have talked many times as, as previous boards about a DPW cost center in the general fund or the enterprise fund or both. And frankly, I believe all the maintenance people should all be working under that DPW. So right now, we, the township shares manpower with the parks, and it works. But in this case, it's gonna be so dedicated to sewers, I personally would flip-flop that. And I would have a DPW and have them all work under that cost center, and you share those resources with the parks. Because according to everything we've learned through this process and from other communities, they have one DPW, and let's say you got one guy, he does parks and sewers. Especially during the winter, when there's no grass to cut, when maintenance is, is really required on these pumps. You, we can, we can save, the township can save money by consolidating that effort. It just doesn't make sense to have a separate, once those come. And I'm not talking about twenty-twenty-five necessarily. But we do know from our engineer and some of the other folks we're talking to, when Phase One and Two is done and operational, you're looking at four to five employees just for the sewer system.
But before you move off, so.
Yes.
So something you said, and Chris, I forgot this, it's gotta go on the list. There currently is no requirement for any kind of security system or cameras at the processing plant. I believe that's coming. I think it will be mandated eventually. We were notified by the Michigan State Police Emergency Management Division that they expect FEMA funding for twenty-twenty-five. They wanted a wish list. So their wish list, our wish list was a generator for this building at a hundred-thousand dollars. That was submitted. Now, it's not, the money's not there yet, it's just a wish list, okay? But that was submitted. Couple of months later, they come back to us and said, well, we didn't have. Couple of months later, they come back to us and said, well, we didn't have as much response as we'd hoped. What else you got? So we went back to them with a, and again, emergency management, very all encompassing, floodwaters, uh, shelter in place. It, it's a very long list. So we added to that list seawall replacement or Marina Park and cameras and security system for the processing plant. So you may get a call somewhere in early 2025, hey, there's funding available. And, you know, where's your formal grant application? Thank you.
Okay, and then Chan, did you want to talk about number 10?
Okay.
Chan, uh, Chan.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. It, it, even though I haven't totally untangled the accounting for the utilities, it appears that, um, it is not a, uh, sustainable, uh, fund at its current, uh, structure. So, um, one of the things that's in play is what does, what is the actual cost per unit of, um, sewage that is processed by the plant? Um, part of that answer will be charging the state park based on actual usage. Uh, their contract is up next year, so that's, but that's a minor part of the problem. Um, I do hope that as we add more people to the system, as I've said about a number of things here, you can either ask the people that are currently involved to pay more, or you can get more people involved so that the load can be spread across, um, more people. It concerns me when we're, uh, sending out messages that tamp down development here. I know we all like the quiet little community, but it's not sustainable. So, um, there, there will have to be some discussion about how to best address that. And frankly, I think at the size of the system, as these other phases come online, it would be who, the, the new board to consider setting up a sewer and the, to, to do the work of updating the, the ordinance for water and sewer and develop the process for change orders and monitor changes in the community and, um, make recommendations about contract changes and, uh, charge changes to, to the customers that are on the system.
Keep going down the list, will you?
Okay. Uh, the sewer rates, uh, get raised by either CPI or 6%. Um, that takes effect in March. And back to the, the state park, um, they did ask to be taken off the flat rate, um, REU fee. And I'm currently working on rolling back those bills and rebilling them for the first three quarters of the year. I'm not, I'm not sure they're going to be happy with bills, but I'm doing what they're asking. The new billing notices for new customers will go out in November.
Well, that would be up to the new board.
Yeah. That's the current schedule for it, though.
Yeah. Um, we did push all of that online and outside.
I'm working on getting both of those SADs set up in the, in the, um, special assessment system so that it will be included as appropriate on the tax rolls for the December billing. We need a process and forms for Phase One and Phase Two hookup information and payments. Um, we need to figure out how to systematize the RRI payment that needs to come into, into the, um, RRI accounts on at least an annual basis. Uh, I have work papers for some of this. I don't have work papers for all the things I'd like to have work papers for that related to sewers. Um, the sewer meter reads, um, are currently happening quarterly. The meter reader we have now only tracks eight accounts at a time. I'm not sure, um, we must have gotten a really good deal on it. Eight works for now, eight won't work a year from now.
So, so not to interrupt you, but just so that you understand what that means. You got a handheld device, it's a Prox scanner. You take it up to the house to the business, you hold it up, you scan it. Once you get to the eighth one, it's full. You now come back here, you download it, you go back. If you have a ninth sewer or tenth sewer account, now you go back out in the field and you start over. Absolutely not scalable.
The other, yeah, go ahead, Jan, keep going down the list.
Okay, uh, determine one or three enterprise funds for different sewers. I'm not sure that, I think that's a Chris thing. We're talking about making the whole thing, treat it as an enterprise fund because it is. It's just a matter of how many, um, I, I like things broken up based on the USDA loans. So that's how it's currently being booked. The full amount of the loan and the net amount of the receivable is, is currently out there for one of the loans and the other two will be done tomorrow. Fix the EPA loan percentages. I'm not sure what that one is either.
If we get the grant. Uh, uh, when we get the $1 million grant.
Oh, the 1 million, not the 3.5 million.
Right.
Got it.
Uh, that'll be 4.5 million. And then that will change the percentage.
Yep.
Of what USDA loan pays for and what the EPA charges.
Yeah, and I, I started that work paper so that when, if, when and if that comes online, it'll be easier to figure out how to allocate those payments. The VA clinic is currently paying flat rate REUs.
Six.
And that should be reevaluated in December. That was the reason.
Right. Okay, anything else on sewers or water, folks? Okay, let's move on to the commercial rehab district. Uh, we have, uh, two, uh, that have been approved by the State Tax Commission. It's only done October 31st of each year. So anything that comes in, um, after that waits till the next year. However, if you have a request for an exemption certificate, you have to complete it in 60 days. You can't table it. It's a yes or it's a no. That's the law. We have one, uh, gentleman that filed, uh, he's got a $133,000 grant from the MEDC. And, uh, if, in order for him to get that grant, the community, uh, has to have skin in the game, either by putting in, you know, sidewalks or parking or lighting or a tax abatement. But either way, uh, uh, if we, if, if you cough that up, they'll give us money. If you don't cough it up, you won't get us money. And we talked about the police. And they need a generator for your trailer, correct?
Yep.
And, um, uh, of course, continued, uh, budget support to pay down the underfunded retirement account. And, uh, new board will have to negotiate a new police contract in 2025. Anything else to miss?
Any sand sheet contract?
What's that?
And my contract.
Oh, okay.
Don't forget me.
And don't forget to change the insurance rates that the employees pay with first payroll in the summer.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, fire department, who wants to handle that?
I'll do that one.
The language in the fire contract is unbelievably, um, archaic and needs to be updated before that contract is renewed in December. Uh, the fire taxes, the, the collections on those taxes, um, we pay that after we collect the tax and that represents services rendered for the prior year. We did not make as much progress as I would have liked to, to find a way to get them caught up. Supporting the township from, in a form of a fire authority with civilian oversight and public audits would be great. My recommendation would be to do something like, uh, being done a little bit south here where every board that that township serves is a member of its township board on the fire authority. And, uh, what was it? Nope, that's there. And the township should be listed as an additional insured on the fire department's, uh, insurance policy. And that way, in the event of a claim or cancellation or change in policy, that the township would also be notified of those changes.
Okay, the river steps, Chris, you'll have to help me with this. Uh, we've filed a claim after the river steps were damaged, uh, because of the construction next door. Never heard back from them, so we got on that. Uh, this week, we finally have a, we have an adjuster already, an investigator. So even though, God bless Doug, Doug, he's out hunting, but he sent me all the pictures and all the information to send. So I thought that was pretty cool. And he hadn't got a deer yet. He just set up camp, so maybe tomorrow. But you've got to follow up on that claim now. The in-between people, I love them. They're great, they're wonderful, and they promised that they're going to fix the steps. That don't work. Okay, this is government, not, you know, you're a family member. So we have to file a claim to make sure it's on the books. Uh, so we can move, so we can move those repairs forward. I do want to caution the new board that just, uh, this is from Doug, not from me, but just in the engineering board, actually. Just because a certain section of a sidewalk is cracked and another one is not, those other ones that are not have been tilted like so, right? They got to come out of there, right? And I'm telling you, if they want to use, um, uh, plastic injection, uh, that's one way to do it, but I wouldn't let them do that unless our engineering firm says it's okay. Uh, I mean, it's a very common practice in Florida with all the shifting and stuff. But Doug's concerned about it. I would just follow, uh, the advice of the engineer. So, uh, we opened the claim, um, then they've asked for more information. I'll send that tomorrow. Uh, they'll start working with, um, the adjacent landowner, landowner at the in-between. And hopefully by the spring, they're going to recall, uh, grind it up and rebuild. Roads and bridges. We already talked about the gravel roads. Like I said, we provided, uh, $25,000 before July 1st, the end of the fiscal year, and $25,000 after. I know that sounds like a lot of money, but we probably got a quarter of a million dollars worth of work out of them. Wouldn't you say, Janet?
Oh, yeah.
Because they only charge us for the gravel. They don't charge us to haul it. They don't charge us for the equipment. They don't charge it to spread it. They don't charge us for the labor. They don't charge us, uh, for the design work. All we do is buy raw gravel and, and you just can't beat it. Uh, I'm especially concerned, um, about the northeast corner of the township out where you live, uh, and Grandview Beach area. We did get to it, but not enough. You can't, you know, maintenance is an ongoing thing. We all know that. You just can't, you know, say, oh, okay, well, we spent enough, uh, come back and see me in 10 years, we're going back to six grand a year. It just doesn't work, especially when you're brining twice a year, right, Jan?
Yeah, and most of the brining, you really need, uh, to put in play a two to four week, um, order ahead of when you want the brining to occur, especially for the first.
Or you won't get it.
Well, you won't get it when you need it. You'll get it, but, you know, there'll be all sorts of dust. So if you want to shoot for the mid of, of May, let's say, you really need to have orders in, uh, the third week in April. And remember too, you know, we, we have, we have a great relationship with the road commissioner right now. Matt Hall has been over the top.
Incredible.
Over the top cooperative.
And so.
Proactive, coming up with ideas.
Yeah.
And so the road commissioners. So the matching money for that stuff is competitive. And the more that you put in, the more of their slice you get. It's competitive in that, um, there's only so much to go around. And there's been this little informal kind of thing between us and Mullet where, you know, Laz's supervisor from Mullet, he's trying to outspend us. But the, the more money that we put in, the more we get back. And it's a $25,000 match, you know, we've got to put the 25 in. And there's really, it's only limited by the number of projects, the number of funds that they have available. But, um, for the past year, we were number one. Laz is trying his best to beat us out for next year, but the more you spend, the more you get back in return.
Uh, some other things that concern me is, uh, what's that road off, uh, Randall Express? Waban?
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, Waban is always a problem. That needs more attention.
It's got a lot of Morrow.
Yeah.
And it moves around a lot.
Macavista, uh, is a problem.
Fisher, Fisher Trail or Fisher Woods, I think.
Yeah. Yeah, so, uh, you know, part of the problem is you can't brine sand. That doesn't do it good. You got to have the gravel there, so. But again, uh, that's up to the new board. Uh, we talked about the bridge painting. Because of my shoulder injury, I wasn't able to finish it. But we know the special kind of paint. I'm going to give it to Doug and, uh, it's industrial strength stuff. Road and cleanup, uh, we started on that. Did fairly well. The permits are in place if you want to continue that. We still need, I, I know we've done it, but Parks Commission needs to consider, uh, additional gravel, which is not part of the 50 grand for co-op, uh, park, Lower Marina Park, Highway Park and other, other roads prior to brining. So after we did, for example, and this is a good example, uh, the Lower Marina Park, right? They did a great job, but by the end of the summer, it needed touch-up.
Yeah, it sinks. It sinks with hews.
Yeah, you know, like another $2,000 worth of touch-up. Yeah, Morrow's part of the problem, but not all of the problem. You just got to, uh, keep on it till we get that base where we, where we need to have it. I would remind that, uh, downtown parking, striping and bump out needs paint, may need painting next year, especially down by the fish where they wear it out. And what really needs attention, and we have a machine to do that, uh, Devo Beach parking lot needs striping. Uh, other than the ones I did by hand for the handicap areas, all the white stripes are non-existent anymore. And also, the county, uh, was required to do a lot of things on that recycling center. And, you know, we're on our third year since they promised these things. They did get the concrete, um, in there. They did get the fence in, but, uh, they are supposed to put, uh, cameras at the recycling center to try and catch all these people that are dumping garbage in there and styrofoam. So I would stay on them about that. They're easy to work with, but, uh, slow to institute. Fireworks. Uh, Janet, you were the head of that.
Yeah, I'll take that.
You want to explain that?
Yep, we had a, a really good relationship with Great Lakes Fireworks. It, they've sold. Um, the new, um, people, um, want a larger, um, minimal.
It was sold.
Yeah, it was sold. So the new, the new owners, um, uh, want a larger show promised. Okay, so what we did in previous years is the minimal amount that we would budget lately has been 15,000 for the minimal.
Right.
And then we would add donations to that. We ended up with close to 40,000 this last year with all the donations. And so we kept them informed of how much we were coming in so they could plan accordingly as the donations came in. But the new owners don't want to do it that way and their minimal amount has increased. I'm not sure how much, but it, it has increased. We only put in $15,000 for this budget to cover that for this next summer. By law, we cannot commit the new board to do more than 15,000. And so what you need to do, I guess, is, um, you either, you have to bid out the contract, then set the date and decide how much you all want to put towards that, um, or the new fireworks.
When we were working with Great Lakes Fireworks, um, they were, uh, under the old owners, they signed the $15,000 contract. And they said, you can go up incrementally right up to.
Uh, like two weeks before.
Two weeks before.
Mm-hmm.
And that's how we were able to get all those beautiful things that.
Even the water fireworks and all that.
The water fireworks.
Yeah, it's awesome.
And we also use that for additional police officers. Can you speak to that? How did it go, chief?
Oh, well, very well.
Yeah.
So we had, uh, I'd asked for three, they only gave me one extra deputy. But really, as far as parking goes, was probably one of our best years. We had a little bit of a problem on one of the side streets, uh, runs north itself, uh, next to Devo Beach, but other than that, it was a pretty smooth night.
Good, a lot better than what it has been, yeah. Good.
Okay, assessing, just, you know, we. Okay, assessing, just, you know, we still need to continue to update the assessing roles. I think that's what, what do you tell us, a five-year project? Yeah. All right, moving along.
IT's then.
IT. Um, go ahead. Well, I'll, I'll take some of this. We need to update the web and Facebook login, some passwords. I'm, I'm gonna, uh, turn the Facebook over to Sue, um, here next week. I've talked to her about this Power PDF standard. So, what is Power PDF standard? We didn't wanna spend the money on Adobe because it's a subscription that's extremely expensive. Uh, so we went up to the county and they, they recommended what they use, which is this Power PDF standard. And, uh, it's just drag and drop. So, um, if, if you wanna put in, uh, let's say you're assembling a board packet and one document's in Word, another document is in PowerPoint, another document is in PDF. This program, it doesn't matter. Boom, 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 you drop it in, it converts it. You can move it around. Um, it's a big, big time saver. Laura, I think, I think you remember, when we first started, we had to print it all and then re-scan it. And, and those days, uh, should be over. And it really comes in handy, some of the other things that I've learned. If you set that up right, you can digitally sign everything. You don't have to, you don't have to print it, write it, re-scan it. You can, uh, there's a thing in there for signatures to, you just set up a certificate, a password, and, and bang. And that, that's a big time saver. So, uh, let's keep going. We update the financials on the webpage monthly for everybody to see. And accordance with the policy in Chapter Two, uh, and this is a major change from previous board. With the way our policy is now, every, this is especially important for you and Sue. Any board member can put an item on the agenda under this policy, right? Now, yes, it's the supervisor's statutory duty, uh, to do the agenda. But we've extended that to make sure that if you have an issue, Sue has an issue, or anyone else has an issue, uh, they can put it out there. You fill out, right now, they fill out the form. They get it to me by Wednesday close of business, right?
That, that's really important for the trustees, Jonathan, because it puts you on an equal playing field with everybody else. You're not gonna be in the office all the time. They are in the office. The other board members are in the office. They talk amongst themselves to try to get, okay, what do you want on the agenda? What do you want? They don't get to talk to the trustees on a, on a normal basis, right? So, all you have to do, as the policy is now, is submit what you want and it goes on to. Because there might be something that somebody called you about, that you wanna have email discussion about, whatever. It goes on the agenda and it can't be, like, put off or anything like that. You get to put it on. And it's, and it puts everybody on this board on an equal playing field to get their, their items on the agenda so it can be discussed and voted on. So, it's very.
Remember when we were trying to use a G-drive? We do everything on the shared drive now. Under the supervisor thing, it says, uh, November, December, January. And, uh, what happens is anyone that has anything, they just drop it in there. So, when the bills come, uh, Karen just drops the bills right into that, right into that shared drive. And then I go, okay, and I put it in there. Just drop it in and wallet. It's, it's pretty awesome. It, it takes a little time to learn, um, but I, but I think it's, it's worth the trouble. And then we try to get this out by Friday, 5:00 PM. I think we've done that except for one time.
That's when the servers went down.
Uh, right. Um, so, uh, I've always felt that the board packet should be published, uh, first and then I send it to the.
Yeah, we all get it last.
The trustees, so we get it last. But this is nothing new. This is exactly the way the county taught me to do it. So, the whole, uh, they taught me a really good lesson. And I learned this in the military too, you know? If you're on time, you're late. So, uh, this last-minute stuff of, uh, oh, we gotta put something on the agenda. The county taught me well. It's only for emergencies. For example, uh, you know, if there's a grant opportunity with a deadline, uh, they make an exception for that, right? But other than that, uh, Jeff Lawson, he just doesn't let it go. But, you know, again, that's up, that's up to you. Did you wanna talk about, uh, live streams?
I, you know, I, we're, we're doing it. We're doing it with YouTube. Um, it's very minimal cost. It's just an annual subscription. Uh, it's a very simple process, so it's easy to, easy to explain if somebody wants to take that over. Um, the other thing, I see, I'm getting a little ahead of you on your list.
No, go ahead.
A, a couple items down is a new PC for the supervisor. That is already purchased. It's onsite. It's configured. It's sitting behind Chris's desk. These are not, uh, voluntary or discretionary purchases. The, um, some of the PCs in use are end-of-life because they're not Windows eleven-upgradable. So, you know, the, the purchases for, uh, the assessor had two in his budget. The, um, supervisor's was not budgeted, but, you know, we had an opportunity to, to buy the units bare bones for, I think they were four hundred dollars. So, they're, um, and the one for Bob is, it's online, plugged into a network card in Carol, in, uh, Chris's office. All up and ready to go. The only thing that has to happen is the local files, whatever there may be on his desktop, need to be moved over to there.
Yeah, I don't have any local files. Just so you're aware, all the files under, you know, when you go to documents, those don't appear. Those are not saved on your computer. They are saved on the shared drive. Keep going, Ron. Sound system, temperature. Someone's gonna have to train on this sound system. It's fairly easy.
It also could, um, it could use some upgrading. You know, this is a, this is kinda cheap Chinese stuff.
Yeah, this is something I donated four years ago.
Normally, it works. It is very susceptible to, um, cellular interference. So, you'll hear the buzzing sometimes because your phone's too close to the microphone. There is a potential to interface between the building microphones and the building cameras, again, down the road. The only other things.
Security camera setup, temperature control.
Yeah, there's, there's, um, uh, you're going to, again, have a forced transition to B S and A cloud. There's going to come a day, I would say, within probably eighteen to twenty-four months, where they're gonna stop supporting the installed, you know, the locally hosted version. That is a big expense. I mean, like, uh, B S A-type fifty thousand dollar big expense. But, you know, you, you're just not gonna have an option. There's a lot of security reasons to transition to a dot gov domain. The actual transitioning is free. But, um, there's a bunch of backstory to it, a bunch of stuff that you, a bunch of work you gotta do. Um, I understand our chief has no interest in moving, but, um, again, it's something to consider. There is a temperature control system in the building. It is up and running. It's, um.
It does work better than it used to.
It is. It's up and running. Um, it, it's an offshore product. We got a, we got an invoice for software that was in, uh, the, in EU. And they wouldn't accept US dollars as payment. So, um, that, uh, that device may have been hastily purchased. Uh, we may have been kinda sold a bill of goods. It works. It's not great. It kinda does what it would build to do, but it kinda doesn't. Chief's very familiar with it too, and he also has current access.
Yeah, I wanna talk about, uh, Google's email. It is extremely expensive. It's twelve bucks a month. And in my opinion, uh, every, you know, planning commissioner, uh, Parks Commissioner, whoever you have, uh, even the airport manager ought to have their own, uh, passport or Q W P email. But it's cost prohibitive, uh, because it, it's so expensive. And I think Ron and Jan found a way. We just didn't have time to have the board address it, uh, was to go over to, uh, three sixty-five. And, I mean, that's gonna save a ton of money, right?
Yeah. It does. And it also gives you a lot more flexibility. Um, Gmail is not easy to manage. It's not easy to recover. There's lots of good reasons to go to three sixty-five.
In fact, if you wanna back up your Gmail, it's almost impossible. They got one lower utility. But it doesn't, that download any of the attachments. What good is that? You need the attachment. So, if you wanna download it to back up, like when Mike left office, uh, we downloaded all his files and his email, and we put him on two sticks, and they're in the records room. Well, uh, that was a major chore. We had to convert all the email over to Outlook so we could save it in a PSD file because it had all the attachments.
I, I would say the other thing that concerns me about Gmail versus Microsoft Office. Um, on the Gmail side, the administration is very clunky and difficult. Um, in our case, there is no security to keep someone from deleting things that shouldn't be deleted. So, we saw that, um, here, um, in, in an MS three sixty-five environment. Uh, the administrator can make sure that all of the email is backed up on a regular basis. And even if it's deleted by the user, it can be recovered. That is not true with Gmail. And in a government system, that is just crazy.
Yeah, when, when, when we had a, a computer wiped, we tried to, we went all the way to Google. And because it was more than twenty days, they, they could not, would not cover it. You talked about the B C. Okay, uh, B S and A?
Yeah, we, just the fact that, you know, somewhere down the road, you need to put in for that expense to move it.
And the training that goes with it. Because it, while it's made by the same company.
Yeah, totally different interface.
It, it will cost for the software. It will cost for implementation, and it will cost for training.
And the training is about a week.
Yeah, yeah.
And won't be enough.
And just having looked at a couple other municipalities, it is, it's totally different. It, the GUI is different. It, it doesn't look anything like what you're used to using.
Okay, and, and anybody at the table here? Did you, you just go right ahead and speak up?
Did you wanna talk about the Merit upgrade?
Yeah, please.
Just, you know, Kelsey's in the room. Merit, uh, has kinda dangled the carrot for us about the upgrades that they're going to do. And then we just had a meeting yesterday and that, the carrot was sort of pulled away. So, there will be some upgrades. Merit through the library, Co-op is financing some of it. There still is a township portion. Um, we don't really see that the, any, any, the, the police or the township offices really benefiting like we were originally told or hoped, so.
But the internet will speed up.
But the internet will speed up and the Wi-Fi will be faster, so.
Then you can reach it from the party line.
Uh, before we move on, uh, no, let's just move on. Property. You know, we own this property across the street. Station three-ten is, uh, on our property. Uh, they got a building halfway on our property. They got a plant on their prop, our property. They have, uh, they just added, uh, an additional landscaping behind that went on our property. So, um, you have to stay on Brian Fulford to, uh, help us get that survey and then go with the owners of Station three-ten and, uh, negotiate, uh, how they're gonna get their stuff off our prop, property. Because, as you know, everything from Martha Street to the Chamber, just gets narrower and narrower and narrower. If you're ever gonna have a walking path, you're gonna need it. But you need to protect the township because you don't want, uh, what's that?
Adverse domain?
No adverse possession.
Adverse possession. They could file it now and they might have a case. So, you know, uh, I've told him, but I, I haven't done it in writing because I'm waiting on the survey from Brian. Uh, he's got some issues with that, uh, but he's working on it. Okay, so, uh, that, that was one thing. Um, uh, the sidewalk. Yeah, we talked about that. Uh, S A Ds. Uh, go ahead.
Sort of. Um, I'm, I, now that I've taken a decent perusal through the, the utility billing, um, a number of the reports that we run on the special assessment districts don't report the numbers that we expect, um, don't tie to other reports from that same program. Not sure why it's off. Um, we fixed some of it, like the Eagles, uh, N S.
Yeah.
Uh, S A D, um, that's no, and I've inactivated, um, the special assessment districts that are, have long been paid for and should have been inactivated as they were paid off. But we still need to create work papers so that, in, instead of just looking at the GLs and the reports that come out and saying, oh, well, these must be right, yeah, yeah. Accountants like to prove those numbers to themselves by looking at the activity, seeing if it makes sense. So, um, some of those worksheets are in process, but we won't get all of them done by next week. It's not gonna happen. So, Chris will, Chris will have to work on those.
Yeah, number two?
Um, the current amortization schedule for the sewer S A D. I, the worksheet that I have for the sewer S A D shows that, um, we should have collected sixty-five thousand, approximately sixty-five thousand dollars every year in principle from the people that participate in that district. The first two years we did. And then the subsequent years, uh, that would be twenty fourteen through twenty-twenty, I believe. All of those people were under billed for principal. And so, what we've done is we've shorted ourselves. We still had to make the payment. And in some cases, I, I'm assuming that we used funds from people who paid their sewer debt off early to subsidize the, the loan payment. Um, I would really need to do a cash flow analysis to figure out where the funds came from to fund those payments. But, um, I, I am appalled that no one caught it. Someone should have vetted those numbers. If it wasn't someone here, it should have been someone from the CPA firm. We changed CPA firms during those years.
And even Steve Van couldn't help with that.
It, it, um.
He did it once, but it's outdated.
Yeah, well, no, well, it's fixed. It's, it's fixed in the system. And I'll tell you how they fixed it.
Oh.
So, essentially, when the error was caught, they took the remaining principal balance that that account had on it and divided it by the number of years that were left.
Okay.
And that became your new principal payment for the remaining years of that loan.
Okay.
That does not speak to overcharges for interest. So, um, some of the money that was paid in those years was charged off to interest. Um, and there won't be a recovery of that for those taxpayers in any way that I can discern currently. And I obviously will not be here in twenty sixteen, um, as that, not twenty sixteen, twenty thirty-two, when that is fully paid. Twenty, I can't do.
Yeah, how about number, how about number three?
Fifty-two. Number three, um, that goes back to the, the fact that we have the S and A documents that don't agree with the ledger. And, and even some of the reports should agree with each other and don't necessarily agree. And there's, there's a lot of work to, to, to figure that out. We're paying interest on US, to the USDA, on amounts that have been paid off for tap-ins but not turned over to the, to the USDA. So, again, um, Blake was very clear that once a year, we should be reporting to him any of the early payments or additional R U's that are paid into the system. USDA wants that information. Um, if we give it to them, um, and I have, Chris and I are working on that schedule. I expect we should be able to send that to Blake shortly. Um, they will tell us how much money they need for that. But again, uh, we're kind of in a predicament because we have been undercharging for principal for those years. Um, we could be significantly underwater for that.
And breaking news, Blake Smith retires. He's pretty much processing out at, at, uh, January first.
So, that should have happened every year. There's only one payment in the system that we could find for a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, and that hap- And that happened in 2015 or 2019? I'm not sure which. It's one of the two. It's been a while.
Number four?
That's, that's,
Survey set?
That's what I was talking about. So I'm not, so, you know, there needs to be a process. There's a schedule that's built now. We should be able to keep track of when the payments come in that are in excess of what we expect. Then we can analyze those payments and figure out who paid off early.
Okay, number five, NABNOI payments.
That special assessment district has been set up in the system. It's ready to add to the winter tax bills.
And it's only one time. It's only a one-time charge. And all that money should go back to the general fund. We left the SAD that money.
Self-funded.
Yeah, we self-funded the whole thing. So we should be getting that money forty-something, fifty-seven thousand. Yeah, it's in the computer somewhere.
Yes, so that, Chris and I tied that out. That all works. Currently working with Liz in equalization at the county to make sure that, and Denise in the treater department at the county, to make sure that we are moving forward with getting the database for tax ready to roll for winter tax payments. KCI would like to have the files by mid-month.
Okay, we'll speed up a little bit here. You do have to file reimbursements with the county on the Parks grant as well as on the building grant. We talked about that.
In addition to filing for reimbursement on the building grant, Eric's on the Egram system. That needs to be updated every month.
Yeah, they created a monster.
Yeah, I'm currently stuck in July.
Yeah, I know.
They, you can't file ahead. You have to wait till they release it. They won't release a month until the prior month it is decided. So we're trying to get them to move budget for us for July because all of the budget, the whole $200,000 got stuck in planning. Or I had spent $200,000 on planning. So we're waiting on them. Every time they release it, I file a new form, then I wait for them to release the next one. So it's a painful process, but it's $200,000.
Yeah. Hey, Chris, do you want to handle insurance?
Sure, I'll try. So we need to contact our insurance agent and see what buildings and equipment we have insurance on. If there's anything on the cars, because I gave you the vehicles. You probably have stuff you don't have insured at all, and you have a lot of equipment that should be insured that probably isn't. We are working with the insurance agent, as we talked about earlier, for the steps to the river. I got information today about who our adjuster will be on that. I don't know the last time you bid out your insurance, but your service is terrible. And who knows what rate you're paying?
It is absolutely. Well, Mark found this airport insurance that was far.
Yeah, let me add two things to that list. One is the airport because we were approached by a couple of other agents and underwriters claiming that they could save us a bunch of money. And I just, you know, I just kicked that can down the road, but that needs to get looked at. We had a, to speak to the poor service, we had a work comp claim with the library that was declined and appealed and declined, and it took forever. It did get favorably resolved and the employees benefit. But, you know, very, very difficult to get ahold of the right person, waiting for callbacks. The other thing that I would add to that, I too have a concern about what's covered, what isn't, what's scheduled and what isn't. I don't believe we have an umbrella. But I have concerns about things like the Red Barn and its contents, which change but seasonally. Sometimes there's a tractor in there. Sometimes there's a, I think it's a 10 or 12 KW generator in there. So I think all of that stuff needs to be looked at and scheduled.
Let's move on to accounting. I'll turn that over to Chris, Dan, and Jan. Anybody else that wants to talk?
I'm glad number one is number one.
Well, I think you need to expand on that.
Yeah, we will. I'll let Chris go first.
So the state workers who you've contracted for the last three years, their contract is up this year. This will be their last audit. So you need to blow out for RFP, send it to several agencies, which you're gonna have a lot of accounting firms that are gonna say, no, we are not accepting clients. We face that trying to get Dan. But it needs to be bid out. You usually do the bid for three years, and you really need to consider a different firm.
Yeah, it reaches, not that, yeah.
Number two?
BSNA, so when the conversion was done in 2018, somehow entries were made into the year 2039 and 6012. I've been trying to get BSNA to remove those entries. It has not worked so far, but there's a ticket out there. Maintenance needs a new time clock. The one they have prints terrible. It'd be nice if it was one that interfaced with BSNA so the time cards don't have to be ran back and forth. We already talked about the workforce comp codes need to be updated. There's three types of election workers in BSNA payroll. Don't have a clue why, don't know when, which ones are supposed to be used. That's creating issues.
I do have some documentation about that from when we did the W2s, the first round, which I can share, but there still needs to be more.
Yeah, we have one more election payroll to run. We gotta get those figured out for the other problems. I'm just not gonna have time to get the land and the assets before we sign the audit over to the auditors. That's a mess. Nobody's come forward with a $1 million piece of property that everybody's been signing off on since 1999.
Maybe it's Fantasy Island out there, bottom of my leg that we have out in spreads. Who knows?
Yeah, we need to figure out how to pay unemployment on uniform cleaning allowances to the police department and ask for the audit. And I believe, if I remember correctly, they get new clean allowance on January 1st. We need to work on BSNA record time for the police department. We've never been able to get that to work properly. We have another reason why part of it's not, but haven't had time to work on that. I'll let Jan take the new sick pay rules that go into effect.
And you better, you better get on that because that will eat your lunch.
So in 2025, in February, the new Michigan medical sick pay rules require that all employers pay up to 72 hours of medical time off. You can require documentation, but if you do, the employer has to pay for the cost of documentation. So if somebody goes to the doctor and you want the doctor's note, you're paying for the doctor's visit. It's an accrual, you know, or a bank. You can decide which way you want to do that. People who accrue more than the 72 hours under some other plan are not necessarily included in that mandate. But it is going to require a system in BSNA or a very sexy spreadsheet to keep track of who has how many hours of sick time based on how many hours they work.
Number two?
There's still old outstanding checks issued in 2018 on the ledger. After one year, they should be cleaned up, voided. We just haven't gotten to that. We should have never received those. They should have been cleaned up in 2019. They were not. We need to maintain certificates of insurance requirements early for the workforce comp audit. If you don't keep on it all the time, then it gets behind and then it's a nightmare. And we need to collect the trailer tax fee. That's, we've worked out orderly with the trailer taxes people, but right now they're not paying for whatever reason, so we have to figure out why. Somebody else is the building.
And all of that is currently in this league's billing, so it's a lot easier to keep track of now than it was to wait for the county or the state to complain about the fact that they hadn't gotten their money. I will add to the accounting that I did not make any progress to speak of on personal property tax rules. They're still a mess. Part of that falls into the information we have in the system from assessing. Doug and Bridget have been working on that. Personal property taxes tie to an owner, not to a building. So if you think of the Dairy Mart down the street, that property is taxed for real taxes. And when it sold, the parcel for the personal property was retired, and a new parcel for the personal property was set up. It's very difficult when Indian, Indian River LLC. Who is that? Where is that? Where's that property? Who do I talk to? How do I find out why they're not paying? So the physical address is often, it's supposed to be on the return, but it's often not in the system. So we did some work with that. I did a lot of work this past six months, taking time to look at every piece of returned mail, trying to find an address. Amy helped with that, I think, to a large extent, using LexisNexis to find a better address to send it out again. Some of these people needed to pay their taxes and weren't getting the bill, didn't call to get the bill. Also happens with utility billing. And as we expand services in this township, having a real address to send somebody a piece of mail to is imperative. Today, we had a conversation with performance engineers about the fact that we've got three parcels back there, and we know the parcel numbers, we know the addresses, but one of them, the house has an incorrect address on it. So fortunately, in that case, all of that mail goes to the PO box in those instances. So I'm assuming they're still getting their mail because it's not being returned to us. But it's a very big project. And while we made progress, there's a long way to go. Yep, yep, yep. So buildings.
Okay, go ahead.
We need to bid out the cleaning contract for the township and the library. Kelsey and I talked about that, but it hasn't happened yet, and we're not gonna get to it here. The carpet, as you can see in here, needs to be cleaned. Depending on the contract that you get for cleaning the building, the township may want to consider buying both a floor machine for the hard surfaces and a carpet machine for the carpet that's here. If not, then it just needs to go on a schedule where somebody comes in here regularly and cleans carpet. Ron talked about fire and building alarm installations. Also, there's a self-pump downstairs with a water sensor on it.
Needs a brand-new, needs a water sensor added into the fire system in the new some pit that's just been installed for the basement water proofing. It's all set up for it. It's gotta get everybody talking to everybody else.
And we've got beautiful knock box alarms on the building now, but they need to be wired in. They're not currently wired in. And then the sprinkler lines need to be tested. The fire system needs to be tested annually. And then I'd like to add the fact that we have this claim for the heating coil. The coil was frozen and destroyed by the freezing water, also known as ice, and,
That's a $20,000 unit, too.
And we've been billed for it, but we haven't paid though. And we shouldn't pay though.
Until they make it right, correct?
Yes.
And Ron can, Ron and maybe even the chief can give you information on how that occurred. I would not let that go for sure. Elections, Jay? Anything?
No, I think we covered it all. Obviously, we were working on limiting the number, not limiting, but removing voters that were, that needed to verify their residency. So I think there's, and I think I mentioned this past, we have roughly 130 trying to verify residence. And we also have 75 people that have surrendered their license. But yet, the state has not taken them on or won't allow us to take them off the rolls. So there are roughly 200 people out there that may or may not be on the rolls or properly registered. And then 75 of those 200 that should, will be kept on or investigated as to why.
We got all the deceased people out, right?
Yes, and as you can imagine, we continue to get people that.
Yeah, we got one today, yeah. Boat launch.
I'll grab that. Just the envelopes and the fee collection, it's very labor-intensive. I mean, I'm not complaining. There's just gotta be a better way to do it. We haven't found it or figured it out. Police department was taking care of all of it before I came along. We've investigated automating the payments. It hasn't been cost-effective. Beth from Parks has kind of picked this up and is running with it. We really need to update the informational signage in the display case. It's amazing, just, it absolutely boggles my mind, the number of different ways that people can fill out an envelope. It's an envelope with a tear-off tag. How complicated is this? You just, you, I can't even describe it. So, and that is, that is a moneymaker for us. I mean, there are some fairly large deposits in the summer, especially the holiday weekends. You know, that envelope, that box is overflowing, and it's gotta be tended to every couple days. So you can't run out of envelopes because then you're missing out.
We went through four boxes.
And we went through four boxes of envelopes this season. And the number of people that still put $6 in an envelope when all the signage says nine, I just, unbelievable.
Also, it's now parking fees at the airport. So you need to go out there, you know, once every couple of weeks or once a month because your airport manager, you know, does not live here full-time.
Well, and I will confess that I did not do this, but other people did, Ron. People who did not pay their share, some of them, it's clear that they were cleaning out whatever cash they had from their vehicle, their cup holders, seats. And they got some grace, but Ron was pretty diligent where they said, here's $6. And they used the boat launch for three days. He sent them a letter.
And we sent three letters that we filed at the airport, too.
Yeah, for tie-down fees.
Okay, Miss Lanius, who wants to take it?
I'll take the first one. Answering on the phones, we get a lot of complaints of people going, where did I take my leaves? A lot of complaints. Five, six, seven a day, sometimes. Something that needs to be addressed. Leaves, leaves.
Leaves, compost.
Yeah. Out in the hallway and,
Maybe the pit.
Yeah, and maybe the main entrance. Those rugs are getting in pretty sad shape. They're gonna start becoming a trip hazard. We don't know where, who, did some of the past. There's been some different feelings about is it the library, is it the township, is it the cleaning crew? So it hasn't been done what it needs to be. Jan, the next one's yours.
So the library set up an account with Kelsey, the director, to add an HSA as a benefit to her. I have not spoken with them yet, but there are some compliance issues that need to be addressed there. HSAs are, fall under a number of government agencies for compliance. There's a 5500 that includes the census, 1099 SA that has to be filed and delivered to the beneficiary of the account for all of the distributions that go in. It's an additional item that goes on the W2 in box 12 code W that says how much the employer contributed to that fund. So there's a lot to do there. Even though that's not taxable to the employee, and I personally love my HSA and I think it's a great benefit, we're gonna have to work out who's gonna do the work for that. And by we, it's not me. And I recognize that.
All right, I'll take the chamber. With the help of Sue Fisher, we determined that, and Doug, we determined that the Chamber of Congress signed a contract, I believe in December 2011, where they gave the township the bathrooms over there. They used to belong to the chamber. And we would take care of them with their help. But we would share their wealth. That was signed by the chamber in December 2011, ratified by the board in the minutes in 2012, sitting in my inbox. Unfortunately, we can't. Maybe they paid, maybe they didn't. We never found, we could not find any payments or any billing. So Jan and Chris has set that up. They're required, and this is from 2011 figures, it ought to be higher now. You'd have to renegotiate that. But they're to pay $300 a quarter for their share of maintaining the bathrooms. In addition to that, they're to pay one-third of any well. In addition to that, they're to pay one-third of any well costs. Well, we had to spend $1,800 to fix their well. So, they owe us 600 bucks. They're also supposed to pay that $1,200 a year on a quarterly basis. So, we have sent them three bills. One for $1,200 this year, one for the repair in August, I believe, of the well, and then the first quarter of next year because it says pay in advance. I can tell you that if you don't charge them, we went over all of this with the attorney. That contract is still valid, it's still in force. You're welcome to renegotiate it. But just remember, if we don't collect the money or you give it to them for free, we're prohibited by Michigan law to make donations to any organization. And a donation in kind is a donation of none the same, so don't let that bite you. You'll have to follow up on the parking lot zoning appeal. We've already spent $25,000 on that project. Next one is TDA. And again, we're not telling you what to do, but the way I see it and others see it, I'm very concerned about the music series. I, for one, when I get my grandchildren here, I cannot take them to the music series because their parents don't want them around a place where they serve alcohol. And I really think that needs to be addressed. Plus, now that the place where that's held, that gentleman is on the DDA, and that looks like a conflict of interest. But we'll let the DDA address that. Community Trash Day. You can set that up or let it go. I know we've addressed DDA expansion along the river. Mr. ...
Murdoch.
Yeah, Mr. Murdoch has agreed to pay the $6,500 multiple times to expand it along the river.
Can I speak to that?
Yes, you may.
So, the DDA is funded primarily by a tax incremental financing. So, the people who have property and pay those taxes in that district send their money here. We send it to the county. The county in March, when they do the settlement, gives us a check for all of the unpaid taxes. And it includes payment for the tax incremental financing. If the DDA district stays the way it is, it will increase as the value of that property increases. The revenue last year was approximately $115,000. The DDA just took out an additional $300,000 in debt. That current payments on that debt, between principal and interest, are roughly $60,000 a year. They still have other ongoing expenses and maintenance that they will have to cover. And should that payment not increase, my rough graph projection of how much will be owed at the end of four years is $500,000. So, you gotta find a way to increase the DDA financing. And the way to do that is, you may have heard me say this before, you either get the people in the district to pay more or you get more people to pay. So, please do not be, do what you want. You've been elected and you're answerable to the people, but development helps everyone.
The SIRD bond claim that we agreed to...
One more thing about that.
Yeah, sure.
If the DDA can't make their payments, the township makes the payment.
Good point. The SIRD bond claim has been filed with the insurance company. An investigator's been assigned. I would not let that go. We need to follow through on that. Some of that money belongs to the library. It's not just us. Also, you need to renew sam.gov either in December or January. Yeah, okay. Chief, and Jan, I wanted to ask you about Parky and King Light. Where are we on that issue?
We had to give them our attorney request that we give until October 31st, and I have not been out there yet to see. He was going to have that big, long trailer hauled over to Parky's junkyard, and they were gonna take it and scrap it out there.
And the bill that we sent them has not been paid, so it will be going on the tax roll.
Yes, that needs to happen. All the vehicles, though, have been removed out of there. And as far as I know, the camper trailer's been moved out of there. So, the only thing left there is the old pole barn that's piled up there and that one big, long mobile head.
What about the danger to children if we sold that?
No, that just needs to be filled in with sand.
So, are we gonna force them to do that?
It's on his list of things to do, but he works very, very slow.
Well, do we have, couldn't we do it and fill them? Or we probably need a court order, right? I thought we had a court order.
Well, we have a court order, but that is not on the court order.
Oh, it's not? Everything else is but that?
Everything but that. Because at one time, that wellhead, it's actually an old septic tank, the color was fine, it's just over years it deteriorated, and now it's all rotten.
Yeah, I called Kyle at the health department. If it would have been a well, we would have been able to have it, taken care of already. But because it's a septic system, an old antiquated-type septic system that goes down like in a pit, there's nothing we can do about that unless we get a court order on that, so...
Court orders are expensive.
Yeah.
Okay, so I wanted to ask Chris and Dan to chime in here on anything you found, anything you want to tell the new board, any advice that you can give us for them, and that would be the top.
When you get to your sewers, I have some advice at that point in time for all your USDA bills and stuff.
Say that again?
When you get to the sewer, when we start talking about the sewer bills tonight, I have some advice for them because they're gonna be on a very tight timeframe for giving payments, right?
Yeah, okay. Dan, anything?
Just to maintain the books, do your bank rec every month and reconcile your balance sheet to supporting lenders.
How many hours do we have with you?
With them?
How many hours did you think you worked?
Well, I'm only here one day a week, so it's...
Well, not at the beginning you were.
No, beginning with, for one month straight, it was five days a week.
Great job.
How many bank accounts do we have now with all the sewers requiring multiple accounts?
Eighteen, I think. I'll try.
Okay, is there anybody else that...
How many credit cards do we have now?
One. Well, one credit card bill, but it has multiple departments.
Yeah, four, there's four, four people actually using it, so...
So, Chris, Dan, or anybody sitting at the tables, is there anything else that you want to give a heads-up on to this new board?
Well, I haven't found any unusual items. I mean, so I don't think people need to worry about what those flyers were noting, but...
The lack of worksheets really hurts.
Yes.
We've spent a tremendous amount of time, and we can't account for the people, as Jan, the people who pay for the sewers upfront the first time around, those numbers are not jogging. I don't know what we're gonna do.
You gotta get to a good starting point and move forward. I mean, there's some times you gotta let the past go. I mean, you know, you can spend $100 trying to find $100. It's not worth it. It's, I mean, and what happened in the past is gone. I mean, there's no records. So, you get to a base point and go forward. And focus and then learn from it. Learn that, you know, accounting is important. You can't ignore it. It's a necessary evil. You know, it's like, if you don't pay your taxes, three years from now, there's a couple people called the IRS who come up, and they'll take everything from you. So, it's very important to keep your books as accurate as possible. Because, I mean, you're not in the profit business like a corporation, but you do have government funding, and it's just as bad that if the records are poor, they can take that money back.
Makes sense. Okay, anything else?
Yeah, I have one final thing on the, to do it... Well, let's talk about the laundry list, the thing that we have to do, the new board has to do. It's just a suggestive list. You prioritize it, you throw it out, you do whatever you want with it. But these are things that we want you to know that, you know, they come up and bite you if you don't get it done. But that's up to you guys, how you handle all that. But we just want to make sure that everybody knew this stuff is on the table. And as far as the list that I read off the beginning of the things that has already been done the last two years, I want to make note that everybody on this board worked their behinds off, doing extra hours, weekends, whatever it took to get a lot of these projects done. We worked really, really hard on doing grants to try and supplement the projects. And I think it was all well worth it. But we did it without asking for new taxes from the community. We got a lot done because of grants, because of good fiscal accounting and paying attention. We didn't, we went out for grants to help fund that. We didn't ask for new taxes, and we didn't ask for wage increases either these last two years. We did it all with whatever the previous board was getting is what we got. We didn't ask for anything extra. So, just letting you know, you know, we did a lot for the community on our own dime. Bob even went to Washington, DC to help lobby for these sewers when we were looking for the funding for that on his own dime. So, I'm just letting you know, we worked for you guys this whole last two years, big time. And, but it was our pleasure, it really was. And I'm gonna miss everybody, but I'm glad we did it. So, that's, that's my statement before I cry. Okay.
And I want to say something to Janet because if it wasn't for you and I working together on that light grant, the sewer would have been a whole lot harder because we learned so much from that light grant.
Yep, yeah, we did.
And I think they're gonna have a third round next year, folks. Chief might have some ideas on...
On the light grants, you mean?
Although that one down south of town.
Corrected itself.
Yes, it was wonderful, too.
What happened?
I have no idea. It's still...
All I know is it looks good.
Yeah.
Maybe we could use that money to convince Mr. Hendershaw to clean up the car. Or the kinders.
Yeah, but that money that we did for the light grant, just let everybody know, that money came, very few strings attached, easy grant, and it really helped the community out a lot. It really did. So, and that was our first grant, and we did good. We got it. Yeah, mail out.
Before we leave this topic, I just want to just address the budget and the CIP. It's all in Chapter Four. But by the same token, unlike the passports where the clerk did all the work, the statutory duty is that of the supervisor. Yeah, you can delegate it. But at the end of the day, if there's a problem, the treasurer's coming after the supervisor, not the clerk.
Yep.
So, I take that very, very seriously. And there's been some discussion about a balanced budget. The reason we did this zero-based budgeting and this balanced budget is because I'm sure this new board will come up with a plan to put people in charge of certain cost centers, okay? What it appeared to me, and I know it wasn't intentional, but if you have a tight budget, right, and you need extra money, you gotta go to the board to get the money. But if you have a budget, a cost center budget that's 25 to 50% over the real zero-based budgeting need, you've basically given the manager that cost center a blank check. And that is the reason that we have pushed so hard for a balanced budget. I mean, it would be real easy for us to go in there and say, "Okay, let's just jack it up 21% like we had two years ago."
Yeah.
Okay, that, I don't feel that's physically responsible. I just think the entire board has a right to determine whether or not additional funds are needed. That was the whole purpose of zero-based budgeting and a balanced budget. So, let's move on, it's getting really late. I appreciate everyone's patience. If new board members have a question, I would ask you to email Chris, and if she can't give you the answer, she will farm it out to one of us. That way, we have a central point. Your email address is admin@tesco.org. Okay, project invoices, we have quite a few. They're in your packet. I hope you've had enough time to study them. Is there a motion? To pay the sewer project invoices?
I'll make that motion, pay the invoices as reported. You also report that.
Janet makes the motion and Kim supports. Is there any discussion? And we have, these are, these are big bills.
Yeah, they're coming out of the sewer bond.
Right, right, I understand.
Yeah, yeah. I just want, I want everyone else to understand that, too.
But they also have a really tight timeline.
Yes.
Bob and I have to stay tonight and do...
And sign papers.
Performance engineer will pick them up tomorrow. Then from there, they'll go to the USDA. The money will probably be in our bank account wired in around the 21st. You have to send it out immediately. So, you are going to need your whoever's signing checks.
Yes, the treasurer's.
Yep. And she has, treasurer has to fill out the report, and if she can't fill it out...
And the supervisor has to sign the documents.
Yep.
So, okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Sewer project change orders. These are not significant change orders, but they are change orders nonetheless. And that's what leads into your contingency. So, that's why that $1 million is even more important, not only for the township to get to 200, over $200,000 that we've already put in the contingency fund, but we want to keep that as low as possible. And I've told them, no change orders, you know, at one point, somebody has to need to sign a change order. Don't work that way. Board's gotta approve the change order. And if it's an emergency, that's why we have special meetings. This change order, let me get to it. Before we discuss it, is there a motion to approve the change orders?
I'll make that motion.
Janet makes the motion, is there a second?
I'll support it.
Jan supports. So, we have change order number two. We need to add 12,000 and 4,000, but they saved us 3,800. But it's still a net increase in cost of 13,000, some change. The Phase One contingency is currently at $266,000. And they, our engineers recommended approval with funding from the available project contingency.
What about the change order number one?
Yeah, I'm getting there.
That one's next.
I'm getting there. Jane, we just like...
Yes.
So, this is about over rising. They need an additional $14,720, which includes mobilization and demobilization. And again, they recommend approval so we can get some of this work finished. Any other discussion?
And change number, change order number three, $43,000.
No, change order.
Are you doing these separately or...
Yeah, I'm doing them separately in case you have questions.
Okay.
Is there a motion to approve change order number one?
Just a question, is there, are these numbers correct as documented in here? Because I hear other numbers named Andy, but...
No, the forms are correct. All in favor?
We don't have a person...
So, what's the dynamic emotion? Do you want a motion to approve change order number one?
Yeah, yeah, to approve change order number one, correct.
I'll move that.
Jan makes it, second?
Change order number one. I'll second it.
Okay. Sorry, I took them out of order. All in... All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Uh, change order number three.
So Pearson, that second?
Yes, yes.
No, we didn't, number two.
No, we didn't.
No, we didn't, it's in the one and, it's number one to three.
I don't recall.
I don't recall doing number two.
We did not, we did not do number two, we did number three.
Oh, I apologize.
We did, we did number one, now let's do number two, then we can do number three. That's how it counts like to do things.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I make a motion that we approve the change order listed as change order number two for a net change to the, uh, system of 13,067 dollars and 41 cents.
Okay.
So I'm second then?
Jay seconds? Jay seconds. Any more discussion? We see how this eats away at our contingency, so you gotta be really careful. You, you, you gotta talk to Steve almost every day, but he's good about coming up here.
Yeah.
Uh, and he's very good about making sure you don't have any surprises. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Uh, the next item is reimbursements.
Change order number three.
We did that.
We did three. Yeah, we have first one we did.
I don't have it now. Tell me what we did.
And then we had change, that was, and then we have change order number four, which is a credit. I don't see it, okay.
So change number three is?
4306 dollars and 69 cents.
Right.
For, uh, add one hatch and two hot dip galvanized headers for a new hatch, rough opening in precast concrete and labor to install. 4306 dollars and 69 cents.
Yeah, that's out at the plant.
Yeah, but who, uh?
I made, I made the motion and Jan seconded. That was the first one we did.
Okay. So we didn't vote.
We did three, one and two.
Okay.
Okay, where's number four?
Number four is a credit for 3,800 dollars.
Oh, we love that.
And number one.
Is that credit to contingency?
Uh, the long footing are connected to detail number four, shall be removed.
There it is.
Blah, blah, blah.
Okay.
The attachment, one dash.
So is there a motion on number four?
I'll make the motion.
I'll support that.
Okay. So you got that, Jay?
Yep.
Uh, Kim and Jan?
That's 3,800 dollars.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, I turned up.
Any discussion on taking 3,800 dollars back? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so we're done with those. I apologize for having them out of order in my packet. I'm gonna turn the meeting over to, uh, Janet, because on the reimbursements, I have a conflict.
Okay, um, what's up next? It's reimbursement for legal fees, um, that Bob had to pay, um, for this issue that he's dealing with. Uh, do I have a motion?
You do. I approve, uh, I motion that we approve all legal bills and court costs for the township supervisor immediately upon presentation until such matters are adjudicated. The board further finds that all criteria under MCL 691, dot 1408 subsection two have been met.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that. Discussion? Well, um, no discussion. Do we need to do a roll call on this or just a regular motion?
I, I think a roll call would be fine. I, I guess I would like to say one thing, that.
Yeah.
People speaking, um, out of passion and emotion, uh, and making unfounded allegations, uh, have, are about to cost township money. There's a lot of money that's been, been taken off the table because of this behavior. And I, I understand that people get upset, I understand they get emotional. There are consequences for saying things that you can't prove. And I think that in this case, that's exactly what we're gonna find. And, um, it's unfortunate that taxpayers of the township here are gonna pay for it. And I hope that, uh, I'm, I've been glad to see so many people at the meetings. I hope that you continue to be involved to make sure that, um, you hold the new board as accountable as you've held us, uh, so that this doesn't happen and continue to happen. There's, it's absolutely unnecessary.
Well, yeah, and I've got one statement backing that up. Um, personal, um, agendas that turn into lawfare, is, is costing the taxpayers money, um, not only federally with President Trump, but also here in this township. So, um, these unfounded allegations, there's, there's cost to it. And just keep that in mind when things are happening on these websites. Maybe some further investigation other than just believing what, um, false prophets tell you should be the rule of the day. That's all.
Yes, I can, uh, Janet Vance?
Yes.
Kim Pearson?
Yes.
Jan Hillane?
Yes.
Jay Reed, my yes.
And Barbara Hughes himself.
Barbara Hughes's.
Okay, those are passed.
Our next item is, uh, in your packet. We'll handle it as one item budget amendment and bills. Um, there is one last minute addition to the bills. Um, we finally, or Sue, Sue and Dan, from the GDA, finally got that bill from consumers to go out to Pollard's uh, and get those holes down and the lines buried. I know it's a, a, a big, uh, packet, but it's basically for, let me see here.
17,744 dollars.
So, uh, that way we can get it, we would have to get a check for that right away to give to Sue. Yeah, that, that would be great, uh, because the time's clicking on, on the road. I think November 15th run is when they cut off the big trucks and stuff, so, uh, I'm glad that Sue got that into us late this afternoon. Uh, but other than that, I would entertain a motion to approve the budget amendment and the bills.
I'll make that motion.
Support.
Kim made a motion, Jay supports.
Any further discussion?
It's a move to pay the bills.
And the budget amendment.
Budget amendments.
Yes.
Amendment, yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Public comment, please.
Hello, my name's Patrick McGinnis. I would like to report that our supervisor, Bob Kramer, appeared in the Indian River District Court today, November 7th, 2024, at 8:30 AM. This hearing was scheduled as a pre-trial conference. Mr. Kramer and his attorney were not at a point where they felt that they could be, resolve the issues. The judge in this case set a date of December 5th, 2024, at 8:30 AM for a final pre-trial conference. If I'm correct, at the December 5th hearing, either the assistant prosecuting attorney and Mr. Kramer and his attorney will come to an agreement or the case will be set for trial. I will try to keep the community up to date on the matter. As far as false profits, if you do a crime, you get charged for the crime. There are two pending cases against you right now, Mr. Kramer, with about six more coming. And it's because of illegal activities that has been investigated by the state of Michigan. And they found charges were warranted. The prosecuting attorney has justified the filing of the complaints. So I think your payment, this board talking about wasting taxpayers' money to pay the cost of a criminal is a waste of taxpayers' money.
The Constitution says until he's convicted, he's not a criminal.
He is charged criminally, maybe he's not a criminal, he's innocent until. And, and if you want to talk about that, why don't you start telling the truth? I've had reports of phone calls, you've made to different departments here. And what you did not know is what you were telling them is not what was recorded. And they were given transcripts of exactly what was said. And you were lying through your IT Flynn like you are now. Thank you for your time.
Public comment, please. Any other public comment? Uh-oh.
This has been long coming. So, um, I'm Nancy Kramer. I'm Bob's wife and I am also a retired fed like Bob. So I know how government should be run. And until this board was here, there was no government run, trust me. I want to thank the board for everything you've done in 23 short months, especially on infrastructure and government transparency while tolerating bullying, false statements and outright lies. I want the community to know that the hate of a few have cost the taxpayers tens of thousands of dollars in legal fees and audits, as well as 50 million in community investment with no end in sight. Thank you for supporting my husband. He has loved this town since he was a small boy. And like other board members, came out of retirement to serve the place and people he loves despite the hate. We teach our schoolchildren about bullying, hate and lies. Yet a few people in this room who are far left progressives and they lie about their party affiliation have set a bad example every time they come to a meeting or post hate on social media. Their hate sites, spreading lies and hate while offering no solutions. They are the classic cave dwellers, citizens against virtually everything. And it's a shame that these few people suffer from the KDS.
Kramer derangement syndrome.
These are the same people who were either thrown out of office by the electorate, got fired, resigned under duress or removed for cause. Yet Bob and this board are working on a transition tonight despite the hate, something I would not have done after the way he's been treated. This is just the kind of people that Bob and this board are. I am most proud of the work Bob and I and other community members to include Janet have done for the last seven years to bring this 15 million sewer system to the finish line. What has alarmed me over the past three or four months is the significant loss in new investment because of the negative campaign by Mrs. Maves and her rich supporters that have caused tens of thousands promoting a no growth and keepites elders out of their campaign. How does the new board tend to pat back their puppet masters? I have personally knowledge that 50 million dollars worth of projects by four or five sets of investors are now either canceled or put on hold. We will lose much-needed housing, new restaurants. One of them would have been located on the Indian River Business Suites and a new vet clinic. In closing, there's no growth. Keep out strategy by these people in the Chamber of Commerce has turned off investors. It will cost our schools over $6 million in lost revenue over 10 years, 250,000 for the township and 200,000 in lost revenue for the library. Most importantly, our children will continue to move away because of the lack of jobs and most importantly, housing. I only hope that once this, this new board is in office, they can act like adults and do not revert to secrecy, backroom deals, and will continue the transparency and try to repair investor sentiment. Thank you.
Any more public comment? Yes, we did.
I just want to simply say thank you so much. I've watched what's gone on in the last year and I'm just, I'm just so grateful for what you guys have put up with and what, and how gracious of you to be here and lay it all out on the table and give them a heads up on everything. So I really hope that they appreciate it and continue in that real community service spirit. And I hope you guys never have to buy a drink in this town again because you should, you really deserve so much, um, appreciation for what you've done. Thank you.
Karen, Parkin.
Hi, my name is Mark McElwitt. Um, I'm not a resident of the community, but I do have some properties here. And I just want to thank Jay, Jan, Kim, Janet, Chris, and.
Dan.
Ron, sorry, and Dan. But, and Bob, thanks for stepping up and filling the position that was vacated. It's just, it really kinda irritates me that people with nothing better to do with their lives and cause trouble have no solutions, you know? They just come up here and look for trouble. I just can't thank all of you guys enough for what you, again, as this lady said, what you put up with, what you stand for. And, uh, I wish, I was telling Nancy earlier, I wish there was a person's community, a pillar, you know, of this community who would tell these people who are causing these problems, knock it off, you're acting like a child. But I don't know that that's here, you know? And it's really sad because this is one of the greatest little towns in the state. And it's not gonna get any better. Change is necessary. This town has to grow, just like every place else. Things change. And if you can't deal with change, you're gonna get, you'll be miserable because you'll get bored over. But I, again, I just want to say thank you. And it's really been frustrating to witness what I've seen go on here. God bless you all.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, as a local business owner and employee manufactured by trade, I happen to take the health and sanitation and safety of the public probably greater than most. I have witnessed failed septic systems, they're a terrible thing. I have witnessed things floating down the river that are unmentionable. I want to applaud you all for working so hard for phase one and two. It was a thrill to see shovels in the ground this year. I know it took a lot. Patty and I have entertained both sides of the aisle at the Marina the last couple of years to help generate the fact that people know who Indian River is right now. It's our tax money. I firmly believe that our tax money should remain here as much as we can. The Infrastructure Act that President Biden had signed into effect, well, it's insurmountable, the amount of money that's out there to be had. Now the fact that the politicians know who we are, both at the state and federal levels, we need to continue to do that. I look forward to working with Trudy and her board for the next phase three. Uh, there's a lot more to do. At least it'll take the density of downtown that we have currently and the growth that we see coming, that the health and safety of the nation is the responsibility of the department. Okay, and once your well's contaminated, your neighbor's wells get contaminated. And I truly believe if you ever figured out how much a public water system would cost versus taking care of the sewers first, it would frighten you. It would absolutely frighten you. Our, our health official, uh, in Sheboygan, at Sheboygan Health Department number four, told me a number of years ago that if he had to enforce the law in Indian River, he would have to close the town. Okay, and when he made that statement, when he made that statement, I looked at him, I said, can I write that down? He said, I'll never quit writing, it's too political. So when I think about that comment from 10 years ago, when we spent $35,000 to put a new septic field in system in our home of, 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 all alike, we've come a long way, uh, because of the density here. And the number of summer residents that we have swells in the summertime, whether the campground, whether the rentals, whether the cottages, it's critical to have this system in place. And so as I said, phase three, I, I look forward to that happening. We'll take it all the way to the bridge. We'll take care of the subdivision north of the Marina, Indian River Marina. And so I applaud you for everything that you've done. I know it's a thankless job to fill out all the paperwork, all the details in a timely manner and to work with all the people and officials that made this happen. So I thank you very much from the bottom of my heart for making, you know, making it happen. So again, everything you've been through, um, since you're out of a job, we're looking for help over at the Marina. I'm hired, I've got applications in the truck.
You told me I wasn't qualified to pump gas.
Well, yeah, well, you know, we, we, we can train you, we can train you, it's okay.
We always take out the garbage box.
Yeah, and I was thrilled to see the, I was thrilled to see the well earlier down at the. And I was thrilled to see the, I was thrilled to see the well builder down at the Valcon Surgeon. So as I promised on everyone, I said, happy to put a drinking fountain bottle holder, a ball bowl down there too. So I was thrilled to see that. Oh, it's not the well, what is it? Damn, I thought you had already. It's closed, it's closed, okay. So as I promised, we'll have one down there too. So, again, thank you all for your hard work. None of us are professional politicians. Like God, we stumble and find our way along the way. Okay? We're good, we're bad, we don't know. I just hope that there's some sort of reconciliation that can happen in our town, no matter who you are. There has to be a way to reach out across the aisles and do something together. So I applaud you all for finding a way to work it, happen. As an employer, I'm constantly looking for more people. As an employer, we're looking to help grow. We don't survive as a, as a summer business without tourists. We have to have them, we have to have the summer residents. We can't make it without them. So again, I applaud you for making things happen. And this fellow business owner, so we're going to work together, make the town bigger and better. So thank you.
Breaking protocol here, I want to thank Bob and his wife Patty, along with Dan, Chan, Dan, over there at Marine Land, who helped gather up the petitions.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So Phase Three, the board is approved several times, and we had the two petition drives, and each time it's come out on top. So I appreciate that. Any other public comments? Yes, ma'am.
Since Bob brought up the well, we did get the easement. You probably already have a, a copy of it. It should be coming. It's been, it's been recorded. Okay. Sue has the application for the well. She just got the easement, puts two together, get approval for the fee for drilling the well, and it'll be going down either later this month or next spring. So it's done. They've donated it.
Public comment is closed. More comment?
I'd like to start, if I could.
Well, you're not on the board, but we want you.
Well, I still want to start, thank you. So, I, I, I'll be very brief. I, I really just have a couple thank yous, and, and trust me, I'll have more to say next Tuesday on the 12th. But it's been a real pleasure working with these people. And with everybody on this board, the vast majority of the people that I come across in the community, they've been nothing but helpful. They're all moving in the same direction, toward the same goal, they get the program. The, I, I want to specifically thank the number of people that came up to me last Tuesday working the election with kind comments, words of encouragement. And the, the people that have or would put their faith in me surprises even me, because it just occurs to me that they don't know me as well as I know. So, you know, you know who you are, and it was all very kind of you, the things you said. To, to talk about elections for a moment, you know, there were 15 people, including Jay and myself, that most of them worked 16 hours a day on Tuesday. And they worked as a team. I have worked many election sites in many roles. I led election integrity groups, I've trained poll watchers. And this group Tuesday was, by and large, the best I've ever seen. They worked together, they didn't take themselves too seriously, they still had fun doing it, they got the job done. There was no conflict, there was no BS. It was a beautiful thing, a very beautiful thing to see. So, and there was one name that wasn't mentioned, and it was Cindy Bynum. So Amy took over from Cindy. Cindy started the process to clean up a QVF that was literally ignored for 12 years. And whether that was locally a problem, whether it was an SOS problem in Lansing, we can tell. You don't get 130 dead people on a, on a $3,000, their 3,000-member voter roll by looking at it every day or every year. So Cindy started that, Amy was able to follow up. You know, the, the operational progress that we made in that election, yes, there was a line out the door to the parking lot from 7 till about 8:30. And after that, that line never got out the door. Even when we had to take a break and do maintenance on a poll book, that line never got out the door. No conflicts, no arguments, nobody upset. You know, even the people that had to get turned away because they were at the wrong polling place. I did my best to give them the address of where they needed to go, and everybody left happy. So that was a wonderful thing. The other thanks I'd like to give, again, and it's already been mentioned tonight, is to Mr. Schofield. Mr. Schofield is so responsive to our requests, and by responsive, I mean like an hour. So we asked him to do some things specific to the election regarding the light timers, and, you know, it seemed like five minutes went by and it was done. So, you know, he, he is an asset to this township that I, I hope we never lose. That's all I have, thank you.
Dan? Anything?
No, thank you. This was a pleasure. People were very nice, very supportive, and no one hid anything. I needed a report, they gave it to me. So, thank you.
Did you find the 400,000? Chris? Board members?
Um, I, it's been a pleasure working with everyone here. I particularly enjoyed working with the library board, so that we could get an actual documented process to get bills approved by that board and documented, so that the clerk could process them from the township, and that I could take some comfort in signing them. I particularly also appreciated working with parks on the budget for this year. Still a ways to go in, in that regard. That board went for a long time without an active secretary and an active treasurer. And most of the bills were only approved by the president of that board, that is a publicly-elected body. If you're an interested taxpayer, pay attention. It should never be that way. The electorate is due a board that they've elected that actually looks at the bills and manages their budget, and doesn't leave it to one person on the board to do that. And we also got the process of getting bills approved and, and paid through the DEA. Couple bumps along the road, but change is hard, and, and we got through it. I hope that those processes stay in place. That's clearly not how things were done in the past. And that was one of the things that I felt most strongly about. The idea that we put things out to people see, some people find that to be a reflection on their ability or who they are as a human being. The more people that look at my work papers and, and the work product that I produce each day and are kind enough to take the time and tell me where I've made a mistake, the better results that everyone gets. And that's the goal. It's not for me to look perfect, because I promise you, I am not. So I've appreciated working with Chris and Dan. We've got a lot of things cleaned up. I certainly, I feel like I went to Thanksgiving dinner and put too much on my plate. There was, I overestimated how much we could get done in this short period of time. So I, I hope that the new board is able to continue on the path of getting things cleaned up and keeping them up to snuff, so that we do not run afoul of the many government entities that are looking over our shoulders now.
Come, more comment?
I just want to say that I'm really disappointed that last meeting we had, with me living on Rainbow's End Trail, it was put out on social media that I, because I'm a board member, got special favoritism for my road issue being repaired by a resident, a taxpayer that lives all year round on my road, needed to have an issue fixed on the road before the frost laws went in or whatever. He had written letters, pictures, whatever, and we voted, and, you know, I voted that it should be fixed, even though I, I live on that road. And I thought about, you know, recruit, taking myself away from it and not voting it, and I was kind of like sitting here thinking about it, and I thought, you know, why should I deny my neighbor from getting the road fixed? So I voted for it. And the minute that I did that, a lot, a lot of people didn't know exactly where I lived, that you can look it up on social media where anyone lives. And I was really disappointed when I saw, and I'll say it again, Tuscor trash back, Tuscor, Tuscor talks back, that the admin, Jane, and her husband, had put out there a little excerpt from the meeting of one that talked about fixing, taking $2,500 to fix this complaint that someone had made that was not me on the road before the frost laws came. It was put out on there also with him going down my road, which I have no problem with, him filming the road. And where the complaint was, he did not go down and actually film, film where the actual repair needed to be. He actually just went past my home very slowly. When he got to my, or went down my road very slowly, when he got down to my house, he filmed my home. And he put on there in big white bold letters, "This is where the board member lives," pointing with an arrow flashing off and on. "This is where the board member lives." I don't understand why he would do something like that. The whole thing was to get the road fixed, and that is the most important part. But to do that is just trying to, again, plant a seed in the taxpayer's mind that I got favoritism. And I, I did not.
Wait a minute.
And then on the way, on the way back, he, he went down just a little ways, turned around, and he came back, and he did it again, coming up, filming my house all the way up with flashing arrows, saying, "This is where the board member lives. This is where the board member lives." And to me, you know, that does not sit low with me. It's very uneasy. I feel like he was stopping me. I mean, there were some things that brought up the last meeting about, you know, some permits or something that he didn't get or something going on. I don't think he would like it if I would have done that to him. It's just, to me, it's just poor character. And you can see this, every meeting that goes on is for character, integrity as a person. And it really baffles me that they put this out on social media, not only just for our township to see, but now the whole world to see it, you know? And it's just, it's, it's something that is not, should have, I, I, I don't know, it just doesn't sit well with me. I mean, if you want to look up where I live or whatever, but he didn't even film, but the whole thing was just trying to show my favoritism. It wasn't anything about the board spent money wrongly on this repair, did not show where it was, the issue or the person that complained. It was all about me. And this is the vindictiveness and the revenge that these people talk about that he does. In the last meeting, you know, he got everyone so fired up with the pot boiling and everything, that there was unfortunately some tempers that had flared, and it just causes division in this town. And it's ridiculous. It shouldn't be happening. We should all be working together. There was a problem on the road, someone complained, they, you know, wrote letters, pictures, everything. It was addressed. It wasn't like I was getting favoritism because I live on the road. And I'm, I'm not real happy with that. But that just shows, I mean, I, I could have done it to him. I could have went on social media, filmed his house, showed the shed, blah, blah, blah. But I choose not to do that. I was raised better than that. I'm thankful for my parents to put special morals and values and integrity and character as a person. And that is why I serve this board and this community. So I just want to say that those kind of things on the website, the social media, really does cause a lot of issues. And I, I hope nothing happens to any of my grandchildren or something, you know, now that it's put out there that somebody comes after me, because it really scares me, and I feel very uneasy about it. So anyways, I know he gets his jollies out of doing that, and he did, he did succeed. So.
Can, can I share an irony with you?
Sure.
I live on Victor Drive. My mother started complaining about the ditch on Victor Drive about 30 years ago. I have asked at least annually for 20 years for them to clear that ditch again, but realizing that an eighth mile of ditch is expensive. I did not have high expectations for that. I've talked to prior supervisors about it, nothing happened. So I have to say that in the last two years, the ditch has been redug, and I don't even know how many yards of gravel have been put down on that drive. So I'm just grateful that, living on Victor Drive, my house wasn't put on there, because I didn't, I, you know, I've been asking for this for years, and it just finally magically happened. So, but everybody on the street benefited from it.
I didn't, I didn't see Mr. McGinnis that lives on Victor Drive. He didn't complain. Same way. Chief, did you get special treatment? I don't want to bring you into this. Chief lives on King Road. We spent a lot of gravel out there. I mean, lot. Did we give him special treatment? No. Like I said earlier, the entire township was done. To be honest with you, every gravel road was done. Any other comments?
Well, just, just a point to make there is that per the road commission.
Yeah.
You didn't go out and tell people to do this road, not that road, this road, not that road. Simply said, what, what do you need road commission to get this job done? They came back with a plan, and they executed it like.
And they do great. So.
So Bob's. They didn't understand that.
Yeah. Bob's quick board comments. I think we all owe a debt of gratitude to Jay Reedsmann. He literally came into that job with no transition, no help. I thought he was going to die of a heart attack the first couple of months. He just kept on pushing. This man still, to this day, works 60 to 80 hours a week. This township would not be anywhere near what it was if it wasn't for him. I mean, it's just incredible what he's done and accomplished, and I think when you get into office, you're going to see that. And the other thing I want to talk about is sewer costs. I have talked to Sue a little bit, but I wanted to let the new board know. One of, one of my concerns is that the sewer customer has to pay their own way. So when you start getting all these applications in for hookups, somebody's got to account for that time. So if she ends up, and I'm just using Chris as an example, but no matter who it is, if, if they're spending 30% of their time, or 50% of their time on sewers, you, you got to find a way to bill the special assessment district. So if I live out on King Road, I'm not getting any benefit from sewers. If I live out where you live, you're not getting any benefit from sewers. So we should, the taxpayers and the whole township should not be subsidizing the SAD. And if, and I know it's hard, but your engineer can tell you about all of his experiences of how they split costs. And, you know, I'm not saying doing a desk audit or anything else, but basically you start with a percentage and you adjust it every year. And I, I just think it's only fitting, I mean, we've talked, you know, we've talked about the library paying their fair share for accounting services, and they pay their fair share on the audit, right? And the police department's starting to budget for, this all costs money. So I just hope you all are able to find a way. I'll be on the sewer system. I should be paying the bills, not the guy who doesn't, or the gal that doesn't benefit. The only other thing I wanted to bring up is about our police department. The only other thing I wanted to bring up is about our police department. You can leave now. I don't want to talk about it. In my career, I've worked with a lot of military, a lot of law enforcement, a lot of first responders, year after year after year. And I know good management and good financial management when I see it. And I am so proud of this police department. It, it, it never gets worse. It always gets better. It just keeps getting better and better. And that's because of the leadership of that man and his management skills. And I hope you will continue to enable him, let him run his department as we have, pretty much hands off. You know, we roping them when we have to, but it's, it's always better to rope somebody in than to have to kick them in the ass to get them to do something, right? This guy's a go-getter. We're lucky to have him. And I, I like professionally and personally, every police officer on your force. I get comments from them all the time, about them all the time, that you never even hear about. And I also want to thank all the people that knocked on my, Nancy and I's door for the past month and a half, just out of nowhere, walking down the street, thanking us. And Karen, I wanted to thank you for your comments because one comment like that makes it all worthwhile for me. And I'll just leave it. Yes, ma'am.
I know we're getting late, so I'll make this quick. I want to remind the public that Bob Kramer is an appointed supervisor. Mike Ridley resigned May 20th of '23, and, and that was his choice. The thing of it is, we put out applications to the public for people to apply for the supervisor job. We did not receive that one. Not one. The board recruited Bob to do it. He did not want to do it. He, he was having health problems himself. His daughter was going through a heart transplant in Kansas, in the Kansas, in Kansas. He's going back and forth to do, you know, trying to help them out financially and, and taking care of Nancy. He had to actually move in with them. Lived there for like nine months or something like that. His, his personal life was in turmoil, and we recruited him anyway to step up. And he did because he's a public servant. It's in his blood. He's always done it. He did, I don't know, how many years in the military, Bob? A lot. 35 years in the military. Always public servant. And when he was, you know, in the reserves, he still did public service when he lived in Ohio. He was on the planning commission. He did all kinds of things like that in his, in his career. And he stood up and took this job. And because he believes in the rule of law, because he believes that people should follow the processes and not skip, skip this and, you know, do it how you please with this committee or, or that commission or whatever, you know, he got a lot of grief from people because he made them toe the line. You know, one person in this room did not obey election law. He did not run for his office in 2022 because he was appointed. But he thought he could just stay in it just because he wanted to. Well, by law, we had to appoint someone. By law, we had to figure that out. You can't just say, well, I don't, I didn't feel like running, or I didn't know I should run, or whatever. The fact is, he can run for this position. That's what started all of this turmoil. Because we had to go out with applications. When he was mad, he didn't want to apply. He, he thought we'd just hand it to him. By law, we could not do that. By our own policies, we could not do that. So it is what it is today. Personal vendettas. That's what this is all about. Fact of the matter is, though, Bob did step, step up, public servant. He never was supervisor before. There's no classes that you go do to like, oh, I want a degree in, in township supervisor. Nope, run as you go. That's what all these jobs are. Kim was appointed to fill Bob's spot. Jane was appointed when Bobby resigned at the same time. She stood up and took the treasury job. Found a computer that the emails were totally white, no work product, no nothing. Oh, well, moving on. Did we sue anybody? Did we file charges against people? Nope, because it wasn't the best interest of the township. Best interest of people in this township is to move forward and do our job and do it the best we can. And that's what we've done. Well, personal vendettas have ruled the rule, ruled, ruled the day, and this is where we are today with Bob having to deal with court costs and lawyers and things like that. Well, you do the best you can. You try to obey the law. We still don't believe he did anything wrong. He doesn't believe he did anything wrong. Personally, I, I think he did 100% right, but they find a little niche. Oh, let's go after them. You know, so I just, the new board come in, be careful because personal vendettas is what's ruling the day. Be careful. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.